I'm Jessica Vaughn, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. I want to welcome you to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We serve more than 200,000 students, including children starting with our early learning programs and continuing with adults through our workforce programs.
I'm Karen Perez, the School Board's Vice Chair. Our district is the seventh largest in America and our team is made up of 24,000 people working at close to 250 sites across the county. Nuestro distrito es el séptimo más grande de los Estados Unidos y el tercero más grande del estado de Florida. Nuestro equipo está formado por 24 millones de personas que trabajan en cerca de 250 escuelas en todo el condado.
Our district is diverse and dedicated. Our board meetings are held in our board auditorium on select Tuesdays at 4:00 PM. The best way to serve our students and our community is to involve you, the public, in what we do.
You are welcome to meet or email any of our board members and follow our district on social media. School board meetings are covered live by Hillsborough Schools TV on Spectrum 635 and Frontier Channel 32.
Meetings are also streamed live on our website at hillsboroughschools.org. Closed captioning is provided on all broadcasts and past meetings are available in our online archive.
We are interested in what the public has to say. We'll include time for audience comments before we address our business items. Our agenda and any supporting materials can be viewed online in advance. They are posted seven days before each meeting on our website at hillsboroughschools.org.
Our vision is preparing students for life, and that means all students every day. Todos los estudiantes todos los días. Thank you for your interest in education. With your help, we are making decisions that shape our community's future.
The board meeting of June 17th, 2025 is called to order. Member Perez will now lead us in a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I start, I would like to acknowledge Dr. McNeely, a 13-year Alachua County School Board member. Now, fellow board members, I would like to acknowledge the life and legacy of Councilwoman Gwen Henderson, a 31-year educator here at Hillsborough County Public Schools. Gwen was more than a respected public servant. She was a lifelong educator and a cornerstone of our district family. Gwen began her career as a business education teacher at Sly Junior High, then Progress Village Junior High, before moving to Jefferson High School in 2000, where her leadership, kindness, and tireless dedication made an impact on students and staff and members alike. Most recently, Gwen served as the District Resource Teacher in Adult Education, where she embodied compassion in helping adults reclaim their pathways to prosperity through education. We share in our communities and her family's sorrow and her recent passing and know that her contributions to education and Tampa will not be forgotten. Now, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Co-Chair Perez. We have no withdrawn items today. I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I have a motion from Member Gray and a second from Member Combs. Is there any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. We have one set of minutes to be approved today, June 2nd, 2025, school board meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes. I have a motion by Member Perez and a second by Member Gray. Any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. Board members, I'd like to go over the format of today's meeting. As a reminder, we are a nonpartisan board who believe all children can be empowered to learn, to succeed, and our decisions will be made without understanding. To pave the way for efficient agenda statements and questions, board members will have five minutes to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. Afterwards, the superintendent can respond. If you have further questions, you're asked to get back in the queue. Member Perez will now read the board guidelines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we begin this afternoon's meeting, please allow me to quickly review the format of our school board meetings. Please silence all electronic devices. There are speakers in the room behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away from the dais. This meeting can be viewed with closed captioning on live webcasts, on cable TV, and on video monitors here in the auditorium. It can also be viewed with closed captioning on online video archive.
Thank you. We have one item scheduled for time certain. At 6:00 PM, we have employee and student input. Now, we'll start with our recognition. We start with A101, recognition of Juneteenth, National Independence Day, June 19th. Member Washington will highlight this recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me this opportunity. Juneteenth is a recognized holiday officially designated on June 17th, 2021. It commemorates the end of slavery in Texas and has been celebrated by Black Americans since the late 1800s. The significance of Juneteenth is an important reminder of the fundamental meaning of freedom in our country. Juneteenth is a reminder of the rich culture that transcends music, food, and storytelling. Juneteenth is an empowering moment of our youth to connect and to share history and to unite in a celebration of experiences. The school board of Hillsborough County is proud to recognize and celebrate Juneteenth. Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Member Washington. All right, now we'll move on to board comment. The board welcomes comments from citizens and values your input to the board. In order to provide the most comprehensive responses to your comments, our staff will follow up with you and keep our board informed about the responses. Our school board respects the public's right to speak to the board, and we appreciate you taking your time to be here. However, it is requested that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a board member or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. Any behavior intended to interrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be allowed. Our civility policy is in place. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. This afternoon, each speaker will have three minutes. Reminder that your three minutes start when you begin speaking. When there are 30 seconds left, you'll see a yellow light on the lectern. A red light and a chime will indicate when your time is up. I will now call up the first five speakers.
Mark Luther Lardo, we have a 7.3 window tinning. Oh, you need that for your windows on the buildings that are oriented incorrectly. Absolutely. And then 7, 8, eight sites, major repairs and renovations. Oh, yeah. See, and this is what all buildings should look like. There's only one color. Only one color. This is about the development that says sustainable. And as Winston Churchill said, "We shape our buildings thereafter they shape us." And here, California, they have this hospital-based renewable microgrid. And it's the largest renewable energy innovation in healthcare, where, like where I go down at Bay Pines, the solar collectors are dedicated for just at that hospital, not fed into the grid. You don't have line losses. And here, the die-off. This is what your schools do, kill the manatees. It's called correlation. You make your stupid buildings that, among other things, are causing the melting of the glaciers, the killing of the manatees. It's going to be a sad, sad future. And, of course, we're going to need the children's working those jobs that Governor DeFure and Trump want to get rid of, all those immigrants, the criminals, the terrible criminals. We have to get rid of those.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Lily, and I'm a resident of Hillsborough County, a parent of a child in the Hillsborough County Schools, a former employee of the Hillsborough County Library System, and a professional pre-publication book reviewer. This is my son's copy of Entango Makes Three. It's chewed on, it's taped together. He pretty much taught himself to read through his interest in this book. It's a true story about two penguins who made a nest together and adopt and hatch an egg, a true story. It's part of a long list of normal books media specialists are wasting district time and money while reviewing, but I'm actually not here at my very first school board meeting to only talk about books. I know firsthand that budgets have been cut to paraprofessional staffing that give kids access to an equitable education. Your schools don't have full-time nurses. There are not enough bus drivers because they are paid so little so kids know not to expect to get to school on time regularly. Students are missing instruction time, missing meals, and losing faith in a system that's supposed to support their education, but they can't even get them to the building routinely. And yet, this board is spending hours and district dollars I wish went to those issues on perfectly normal books, books that no parent in this district has challenged. There's a process for book challenges, even if your bosses in Tallahassee have literally told you not to follow it or to listen to parents at all. This book went through that process, twice. Could you believe when a state board member called employees "child abusers" and suggested firing every librarian and hiring people who can read? When they suggested criminal charges simply for following the district's own review policy instead of suddenly letting random people from other counties dictate the policy here? They are saying this is a parental rights issue, but the only violation of parental rights I see is circumventing policy to prioritize random people who do not live in Hillsborough County. In closing, yes, don't ban books, but stop letting people who don't live here, don't have children here, and don't care about Hillsborough County Schools dictate what you prioritize. Start listening to the community you serve. That's why we're all here. We want to see change in the real problems affecting the kids, underfunding, understaffing, unmet needs. All that matters more than saving my son from his favorite picture book about penguins. I yield my time.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Gianni Hunt, and I'm a committed parent and a member of Magnify Voices, a Concerned Citizens Group in Hillsborough County. I returned here today to amplify our voices and to share our perspectives. Last time I was here, I warned that banning books based on subjective opinions is a slippery slope. I explained that as a former military intelligence analyst and a two-war veteran, I have seen firsthand what happens when access to education and information is restricted. When knowledge is controlled, people lose their ability to think freely. They lose the power to question, to challenge oppression, and to shape their own futures. Knowledge empowers while censorship restricts. That is why we must remain vigilant and demand transparency, ensuring open access to books, ideas, and education. Because this is not just about policy, it's about preserving local autonomy and freedom for our future generations. History has shown us that silencing ideas does not protect, in fact, it limits, it excludes, and it undermines the very foundation of learning. If books are banned due to sexual content, where does it end? We already see this type of censorship is extending in books addressing racism, personal identity, and mental health. Many books containing sexual themes, when taken as a whole, provide meaningful lessons, address real-life issues, and help readers navigate complex topics. Banning them eliminates important discussions about consent, relationship, and personal safety. Additionally, let's not ignore some of the most frequently banned books feature black, brown, and LGBTQ+ characters and many survivors of abuse. Censoring these stories silences lived experiences and prevents readers from seeing themselves in literature. Classic literature and contemporary works alike explore human experiences to include sexuality. Removing these books diminishes cultural understanding and prevents critical analysis of society's evolving perspectives. Yes, we believe in parental choice and protecting our children too, but it is families that should have the ability to decide what is appropriate for their children rather than a government or a school board imposing blanket restrictions. This is why resources like book reviews and age recommendations already exist to guide parents. And rather than wasting half a million dollars on banning books, schools and libraries could use those resources to expand their support for parents, to provide guidance for families on appropriate reading levels and context. Today, I stand before you once again urging you, be brave, think about the future of our students, reject book bans, and affirm your commitment to free education and intellectual growth for all students. Because knowledge is not something to be feared, it is something to be embraced, protected, and accessible to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I am, but I am a librarian, and I've just finished my eighth year in Hillsborough County, and I'm very proud to work in this district. I'm sorry, but the former speaker said it so well. I am proud, and I drive from Manatee County every day, and thank you all. And many of you have come to my library, and I'm very honored that my outdoor maker space is in the boardroom. I did not know until I arrived today. But I noticed and I paid attention to the motto that we prepare students for life, every student, every day, and that's who I'm here to speak for. I've had students that are represented in the books on their list. And I just want to remind you, this list was called before the Equality Florida Settlement, which Manny Diaz himself signed. Also, rather than being illiterate, you have the most educated and highly certified staff in the state of Florida. There's a reason Hillsborough County is on so many state boards. Our librarians are on the board for the next media specialist certification test, which is now under review. We also had librarians on the board that approved the training that all librarians in the state of Florida go through. There's a reason. We know our rights, and that is why we did not fold in fear. We stood up for our students. And you represent those students and families, and like they said, the voters in this county, and they have defeated people that want to take away the rights. You have your board seats because they believe in the direction that we're headed in Hillsborough County. I just want you to know because of this decision that was announced to pull the books, there are five districts who have decided to do the same, even though that is a violation of our district policy. And the state law says if we violate district policy, we are violating state law. So you need to change the district policy if we're going to pull books against policy. They can go through those reviews, but those review panels need to have parents and students that are affected by those books. I just want to make it a point about the Equality Florida Settlement. There's Christian the Hugging Lion. There's nothing inappropriate or sexual about that book, and as she mentioned, Entango Makes Three. Christian the Hugging Lion was actually put back on the shelves in Manatee County, but yet it remains on the state list because the state will not correct the list. Orange County and Alachua are known for more than 100 titles that have been put back on library shelves, but the state list does not reflect that. And Christian the Hugging Lion is one of those, and I know that because I reside in Manatee County. Also, under the Equality Florida's decision, sexual orientation and gender identity can be discussed and cannot be eliminated. Never mind the fact that no state law in Florida applies to libraries. There is no mention of libraries. It was all about classrooms, and that's why we have the policy we have. Finally, Stamped and Out of Darkness are two other books that should not be eliminated. They are history, they're relevant, and if you hear passages today, please remember that's why we have the Miller Test in the United States, and that's why SCOTUS decided the Miller Test determines pornography. It is not a section or one violation, it is the work as a whole and a literary merit of that whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I please have speakers five through, I'm sorry, six through 11, six through 10, six through 10, line up, please. All right, you may begin. Thank you.
Great. Hi, my name's Julie Merica. I live in Polk County now, but I used to be a teacher here in Hillsborough. And the lack of transparency, the government overreach, and this McCarthy-era intimidation threats that we've been seeing, are we okay? Like, are we okay? The data shows that a majority of Florida public school parents do not want their children's library access limited. That's what the data shows. But we've forgotten data because we're disregarding our agreed-upon review policies, removing previously approved books without documented complaints or appropriate warnings. And this, I'll remind you, violates due process. It infringes on students' First Amendment rights, and that's one of the great things about America is we're really strict on those. I hate to be a stickler for the rules, but you're exposing yourself and this county to some costly lawsuits by not following protocol. And the courts are repeatedly ruling against schools that do this. It's not great, and it's how we do things. That's really what it's about. It's not what we're doing, it's the how we're doing it. If a book is truly dangerous, there is a process for that. Ignoring that process sets a dangerous precedent. There's an old saying, "It only takes a second to lie, but it takes years to disprove it," and it feels apropos. These conflict entrepreneurs, this Heritage Foundation, people who don't have kids in the school, are making a spectacle out of our students, and it matters. It matters. It has always mattered, okay? And if I was one of the media specialists who is being accused right now, I would file a harassment charge so quickly. It is wild, some of the accusations. Historically speaking, the good guys have never restricted access to information. Well-intentioned people tend to provide more information so everyone involved can make more informed decisions based on the situation, but I digress. Nazi Party, Soviet Union, Communist China, North Korea, all advocated for suppressed speech, all advocated for banning books first, but not last. And while I'm being extremely blunt, it feels a little anti-Semitic at a time like this to take Anne Frank off the shelves when people are being disappeared off the street in unmarked cars, okay? Against the will of our state representatives in a lot of cases, maybe not ours, but in many states. I'll quote her now. "Terrible things are happening outside at any time of night and day. Poor helpless people are being dragged out of their homes. Families are torn apart. Men, women, and children are separated. Children came home from school to find that their parents have disappeared. Women returned from shopping to find their houses sealed, their families gone." This is what we're banning. At a time like this, freedom is the right to self-govern, not to govern and dictate others. You have the chance to do something right, and it's very crucial that you stand up for what's right. This opportunity doesn't come once in a lifetime, but if you wanted to know what you do in 1930s, 1940s Germany, or in other countries where this happens a lot, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Wise.
Can you speak more into the microphone? Sorry, so we can hear you.
Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Wise. I'm a local member of the community, a concerned citizen, a mother, and a healthcare worker. I'm here because the recent push on book bans undermines education, intellectual freedom, and our community's values. Over 40% of the books that you want to ban have LGBTQ or biopic voices, and these stories, they teach empathy, they prepare our students for a diverse world. It's diverse, okay? It's diverse, okay? These are the stories that we need our students to experience. They're worth learning about. The American Library Association and the National Coalition Against Censorship vehemently oppose these book bans. So not just your community here, nationwide. In our county, it means the students lose access to Pulitzer Prize-winning novels about racism, memoirs told about atrocities that we should not forget. We ban books, we don't just remove these stories. We weaken our empathy. This is how we teach empathy when we are not in their shoes. Books are training grounds for imagination, pushing us to live alongside other people's grief, their joy, their fear. It teaches us to sit with emotions that are not our own, that don't make us comfortable. And not being comfortable with emotion needs to be learned. They teach us to build a world where we have less judgment, where we listen before reacting, where we seek to understand before we dismiss. The answers start with keeping our shelves and our hearts open instead of censorship. We should trust the librarians and the teachers. They're trained, they have degrees, they worked hard for it. They probably paid a pretty penny for these degrees. We pay them. They read these books in full, so they should be trusted to select age-appropriate materials and empower the parents to make choices for their children. When you already have the freedom to shelter your own children from these books, why are we censoring everybody's access to them? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Rachel, I'm a parent of two in your schools. I want to be so clear that I don't care about your legalese that you used at the last meeting. I don't care that you have the ability to singularly exercise your authority and ban books without a single word to us parents. It is not a flex to be able to make decisions that affect my kids and not tell me about it and not email me back about it. The policy should obligate you to communicate with parents and defend your media specialists, but you also shouldn't have to be told that it's wrong that you didn't. Just because you can do something doesn't mean it's right. It is wrong that you have left us parents out. It is wrong that you have banned books, including nonfiction like A Stolen Life by J.C. Dugard, which you're being ridiculed for not being able to read aloud. Something being uncomfortable to a subjective person, to one person, to read that aloud is not the determining factor by which we decide which books stay. The Bible is on the shelves. There's a lot of things in the Bible that I would not want read aloud. Not advocating to ban the Bible, but just because it's in the Bible and it shouldn't be read aloud in front of my kids doesn't mean that we should ban the Bible either. But I guess context factors like time and place and reader consent do not matter to the Board of Education, the same Board of Education that you capitulated to in a breathtaking Olympic-level display of cowardice and disregard for the parents that you are supposed to serve. I can't relate to what it's like to have a spine as sturdy as a jellyfish because I am a mother. I am a mother that has wasted her breath on all of you, and unfortunately, so has my son, who stood here at eight years old and explained in small words what book banning is and that it doesn't make him safer. And yet, just weeks later, you banned several books, and then weeks after that, you dozens more books, even after parents showed up and asked you not to. You have ignored the actual community that you serve in favor of a few disgusting people who abused their power to call my children's beloved media specialist abusive and intimidate you into compliance. Now we're pulling books that my kids love, this is one of his favorites, Marlon Bundo, for reevaluation because it was banned by some homophobe in another county. What does that have to do with my kids? How does that make my kids safer? You have failed at your job, so did the Board of Education. My kids are not safer despite your work. And speaking of work, maybe you should do yours and stop having Colleen Fawcett poorly write your emails.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak public comment. I think it's very important, and I appreciate that you guys do this. My name is Gregory Ross. I am from Brevard County. I live in Melbourne, and I came over here after seeing what happened at the Board of Education meeting a couple of weeks ago and how this board responded. I will say Superintendent Ayers, you're in a tight spot, and I understand that's a tough decision that you're put in. But what I'm here to talk about is actually what is higher. We've had a bunch of people talk about the details of book banning, right? And why you shouldn't book ban. But it's already been done. The state's done it. This board has done it. Superintendent's done it. It's even happened at the school level, right? Across the state in this district. The book banning is already happening. So what should you guys do now? Should we talk more about why we shouldn't book ban? I don't think so. I think it's a waste of time. I think we should be talking about what your responsibility is as elected leaders, right? Your responsibility as a superintendent who works for these elected leaders. You need to show courage, you need to show strength, and you need to do the right thing. You need to be publicly speaking out against this. Don't hide behind your chair. Am I boring you? Do the right thing. That's what it takes. You guys are on the firing line, along with everybody else that works in this school district, along with every parent sitting out here who has the courage to come up here and speak week after week after week about book bans. You've heard the words fascism mentioned already. I think somebody even mentioned Hitler, right? Germany, right? People aren't just pulling these words out of the air, right? They can smell it, they can see what's coming, right? You guys are what's here to stop it, okay? Not these people out here, they can't stop it. They're busy yelling at you guys to stop it. You guys have the power to do this. Stand up against the state. Stand up against those who would put their boot on people's necks over what they can read and what they can't read. Have some faith in humanity, right? That as a group, we can say no to this. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I please have speakers 11 through 15 line up as well? Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Amy Raub. I'm the volunteer state director for Defense of Democracy for the state of Florida, and I'm over here from Brevard. So while my husband and I were watching your June 2 public comments from that meeting, we were cracking up because it's the same people, different names. All the same canned arguments that we've disproved meeting after meeting. Eroding innocence, not ignorance, really. That's, that's what books do. They don't erode innocence. That isn't how innocence works. I encourage you to go and watch our meetings from about October 2022 on. It'll be like a crystal ball, okay? We know the gaslighting that's happening with Moms for Liberty. There is no porn in schools. They're just gaslighting you. You know that, I know that, he knows that, Van. Mr. Superintendent, you have children, and they're watching, along with the rest of the state and the country. Your grown children will someday, someday tell this story. You think it's going to be at a wedding boastfully, or maybe at an AA meeting? Will the story be that you stood up in the face of fascism? Or will it be that you banned hundreds of books because you rolled over for the worst people in power? Did you protect your students and teachers from this fascist censorship and extremism? Or did you roll over? You still have time to turn this around. You could be the face of how you use all that privilege for good. You could be the change. What's the worst that could happen if you stood up, really? You lose your job? So what? There are other jobs. You're ushering in fascism for your own comfort. That's not leadership. You could lose your dignity, and that's what's happening as we speak. That's not so easily replaced. The respect of a nation. Good luck getting that one back. But how about the respect of your grown children once all this is over? How about the current student body? They're all watching. This will be their story. And that includes the children of media specialists and librarians. I want you to think about that. Think harder, do better. Keep politics away from our students. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Afternoon. My name's Paul Raub. I am also a volunteer with Defense of Democracy over here from Brevard County. We came by last year to say hi. We're your ghost of Christmas future and with some warnings about the state of our school board over there. Moms for Liberty owned and operated internationally, internationally ridiculed. Teacher shortages, teachers fleeing. And we said, you know, you guys seem to be doing okay. Maybe don't go that route. I guess we should have been louder. Watching the previous meeting, and as my wife said, it's like a word-for-word reboot of Brevard County 2022. Didn't like the series the first time around, not enjoying the reversion, the new version. And there are many, so many, most wonderful, dedicated parents and educators in Hillsborough County. And they are horrified to have people up here claiming to speak for them and being treated as if they represent most parents or common sense when these people want to take books from other people's children and call it parental rights. These people want to overwhelmingly target LGBTQ topics, although they've mostly learned not to say that part out loud. But look at the list, the numbers tell the story. And who have this really odd hobby slash fetish of reading spicy passages from books in front of other people's children who never asked to hear it and who weren't given a chance to leave the room, and calling that parental choice, and equating it with a high school student of their own volition choosing a high school book off of a high school shelf and reading it to themselves. They're not the same thing. You know they're not the same thing. They know they're not the same thing. And these people want to use statutes as a fig leaf for their behaviors while quoting the statutes selectively and oddly usually pronouncing it statues. And if I thought statutes were telling me what to do, that's pretty scary. I'd maybe do what they said as well, but if anybody's worried about that, statutes, it's laws. And to refer to anything that our state superintendent has ever said as common sense. And speaking of superintendents, pulling the entire list of anything that's ever been removed in any of the counties and the states is something that was tried and voted down by our school board. The Brevard County School Board said, no, that's a little too far and reckless. You did something too dumb for the Brevard County School Board. Just live with that. That list includes things removed and returned. That list includes things removed from an elementary school and moved to a middle school. That list includes things removed by mistake. But hey, let's just pull them all out of the high schools. If you're only going to be, you know, a marionette or a stenographer for the state school board and not stand up for your students, why even have your job? An email foreworder would do it for you. Stand up for the students, stand up for the teachers, do the hard thing. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon to the esteemed members of the Hillsborough County School Board. My name is Samira Burnside, and I speak today as a Hillsborough County resident, asking that the board create a proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month, just as the board has since 2021, stands, of course, last year where the board issued only a recognition. I can sense perhaps some confusion as to why this demand is being made in a time when the world is swarming with issues, where books are being banned. Why is a pride declaration such a big deal? And the answer to that question is that it shouldn't be. A pride declaration is not a policy. It's not a change to how the county schools are run. It is not a stand against a conservative legislature, and it does little other than make it known to queer kids across the county that their schools care. With this in mind, with how little a pride declaration actually changes, what does it mean that this historically supportive school board has chosen not to pass one this year? That this school board cannot muster up the courage to offer support at the most symbolic level? If this school board can't even recognize this month, then how will they treat our trans kids come the new year? How will they reckon, how will they respond to book banning requests once they're made of them? I don't want to find out. Set the record straight that Hillsborough County schools have always been a beacon in the sea of hate and fear in this state. Do not mar your legacy of support out of cowardice. Now, I've got about a minute and 30 seconds left, and I'm not going to yield my time. I'm going to wait here and give you the rest of my time to answer me. We've been talking at you for a while now, so let's hear your side. Let's hear why you can't issue a proclamation. Let's hear a defense against all the demands we've heard today.
We don't respond to public comments, however. Board members have the opportunity in their closing comments to address anything that they want to. Thank you.
All right. Hi there, board members. I'm also here to speak about the Pride proclamation, or lack thereof, rather. I'm Jack Forsyth. I work for Equality Florida. I serve as the Tampa Bay Development Coordinator. But today, I come to you as a former student of Hillsborough County Public Schools, a proudly gay man, and a concerned Hillsborough County resident. I moved to Tampa from a small town in Michigan when I was 12. I started at Wilson Middle School as a sixth grader and was severely bullied. I was a fish out of water, adjusting from small town to city. I apparently talked like a girl. I had a hard time making friends, and I was just doing my best to fit in, all the while figuring out who I was at such a young age. I didn't know what pride was. I didn't even really know what being gay was or meant, but that's what I was being called by the other kids. Imagine being called something about your identity in a negative way by other people. Pena allergy, blonde hair, left-handed, gay. The things I was taught only took me so far. I, I had to figure everything out the rest myself. Luckily, I made it through, and I'm proud to stand here having gone through the journey of learning my identity. But unfortunately, that's not the case for everybody. So had there been a safe space sticker, a book, a pride flag somewhere, or an education professional that recognized my experience, maybe things could have been different. Maybe I wouldn't have known fully who I was, but I could have been okay navigating the experience. Maybe I wouldn't have been bullied because the other kids would have been shown and taught about the importance of pride and the importance of accepting others who they may view different. Maybe I wouldn't have had to transfer schools because the bullying became too much. So while to some, it seems like a simple recognition, this month validates mine and other LGBTQ-plus individuals' experiences who struggled simply because of who they are. It's not special treatment. It's simply honoring that the LGBTQ community hasn't always been accepted, but we're changing that, the same way you recognize Juneteenth in Black History Month. There's a book that I call, or a book that I love called The Power of Moments. If you haven't read it, I, I highly recommend it to everybody. It's a book about the defining moments in our life, how the little things become big things to us. We all, we all have them, right? Meaningful experiences that stand out in our memory. Many of them owe a great deal to chance, right? A lucky encounter with someone who becomes the love of your life. A new teacher who spots a talent you didn't know you had. A sudden loss that upends the certainties of your life. These moments that are often times left to chance don't have to be. We can write and create them for others. A simple recognition of Pride Month shows the thousands of young struggling kids and families that it's okay to be who they are, creating a defining moment in their lives that will stick with them forever. Defining moments are short experiences that are memorable and meaningful. They rewire our understanding of ourselves in the world. In a few seconds or minutes, we realize something that can influence our lives forever. Of all the ways we can create defining moments for people, the simplest is to offer them recognition. Please recognize Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ava, and I am here as a high school student to speak to you about book banning. I believe that you should continue fighting and work against the demands of the state government, not only for students like me or parents like the ones you've heard, but for our entire society. The writer Lori Hals Anderson said that censorship is the child of fear. And it's all right to acknowledge that fear is natural, but fear is not what should be driving us. Fear is not what should be making us capitulate to these demands of state governments. Because Anderson's quote continues that censorship is the father of ignorance. That's why I say you must fight on behalf of not only students and not only parents, but our entire society. Because if we keep letting this go the rate that it's going, maybe Hals's own warning words will be banned in the future. You've heard the word censorship a lot today, and while some of you might not think that book banning is censorship, I want to remind you that it doesn't always have a negative connotation. Censorship can be protective, but no matter the context, if you're suppressing a certain type of voice or content, you're censoring something. So whether or not you as school board members or parents in this room believe in the rightness of their actions in fighting against certain books, they are inherently using government effort to interfere with the public's freedom. But it's important to keep in mind that the public's freedom. But it's important to keep in mind that despite your opinions, weaponizing the government in your favor, even when it goes against your belief in small government, does fit the negative connotation of censorship and will lead us to the conditions that we have been warned against. Still, there's an idea among some proponents of book banning that we need it to protect our children from any exposure to queerness or atypical sex. The fear is that it might instill radical beliefs in them that will drive them to mental illness or suicide. It's true that there's a higher rate of mental illness among LGBTQ plus students. But remember that correlation does not equal causation, and you should not bow down to demands of the state government that are unfounded and not based on any scientific evidence. I can't tell you why mental illness is higher in the queer community. Maybe I'll never be able to, and that's a scary uncertainty. But we can't let fear drive our actions and impact our students' education. Many of these books awaiting banning frighten parents because of their depiction of atypical kinds of sexuality. And I do believe in age-appropriate guidelines for books, but you cannot ban books in high school. Anyone who has ever set foot in high school knows that teenagers do not care about lewdness. Your child is learning about sex, no matter the books they read, and it won't always be the sanitized version that parents want them to see. If we are truly sending our kids into high school, preparing students for life, we cannot pick and choose the aspects of life that they see. We cannot instill shame in our children. That is ultimately far more pernicious than anything they can read about in books. Parents, governors, school board members, I understand the impulse to protect one's children, but there's a time and a place, and that is not in high school libraries in 2025.
Thank you. Can I also have speakers 16 through 20 line up, please? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brendan Barza, and I'm a student in Hillsborough County at Robinson High School. As a student, I want to share my stance on the recent pressure for book bans. I believe that parents have a right to express concerns, but that it should not lead to censorship unless it meets the Florida statute definition of harmful to minors. A lot of books that have serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value can come with violence or even sexual material. This exposure may cause some parents to be concerned. But as a student, I believe it is important to explore new or tough topics in a place I feel safe. I don't want to be shielded. I want to be taught and feel confident in the world around me, which isn't all good. When people strip away our access to certain books based on their beliefs, it interferes with what other students or families may be comfortable with. If parents struggle with content in school libraries, hoping to shield their children, I think it's admirable, but that they should discuss this with their children instead of restricting books from everyone. The recent pressure put on our school district and superintendent scares me. Some books aren't appropriate for students and do deserve to be reviewed, but the threatening way the Department of Education and Attorney General has pressured our district makes me feel as though they want to hide truth and exposure from students, that they don't trust us to handle content we will be exposed to now or when we're off on our own. I ask you, our school board members, to please continue, sorry, to please stand firm in your review process. Please don't give in to the threats or honestly inappropriate behavior from our own Department of Education. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Erin Quinn. I am an HCPS teacher and parent. I prepared remarks, but I've decided not going to use them because I've heard some attacks on you all today. And I want you to know, I feel the pressure you're under. As a teacher in the classroom, I had to evaluate every day what I thought is appropriate to give to my students. Not only that, but what risk am I willing to take? Could I lose my job for having a classroom library? Maybe. I did it anyway. Because it was important to me to have books in my classroom where kids felt seen. Now, did I comply with all district policies for documenting, reviewing, and listing them? I sure did. We have district policies in place so that parents have the right to consent what their kids read. The Florida Department of Education is overreaching, and I know that puts a tremendous amount of pressure on our superintendent and every school board member. Because one of the things I thought about as a teacher is, if I get fired, who will be here for my kids? If you get removed, who will be there for the kids? Who's the bulwark? And in the end, it comes down to what I can sleep with. If I'm not actually being the bulwark, why am I staying? So as you guys are under this tremendous pressure, one, I want you to know, I see and appreciate your efforts. I know the strain that you must feel in making these decisions. But I'm asking you, consider, are you being a bulwark for our students? Are you making sure they have access to the materials where they see, feel seen and heard, and as our students from Robinson already expressed, that they have a safe place to explore those ideas, rather than restricting parental rights, which is really what this is about? This is not about parents' freedom. This is about some parents dictating what happens in public spaces regardless of what other parents might feel. You need to think to yourself, what am I willing to risk for our kids? So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, board members, superintendent. My name is Tina Williams-Booster. I come before you, and I understand about the ban of the books. My personal beliefs don't matter, but I'm here about something bigger. You all asked me to give you a chance to work it out at the schools. I've done that. I'm back again. When is the board in this school district gonna, gonna really listen to parents and do what we know to do what's best for our kids? You all may be the expert in your own individual fields, but parents are the experts on their children. I'm here at Gaither. I don't have a problem with Gaither. I have a problem with Gaither's administration. Those are two different things. The school itself, there's wonderful things. The administration, however, my husband and I, he's not able to be here, so I have to speak for both of us. We've talked to district. We've come before the board. We've been doing this for 10 years. When are you going to heed the warning? You have administration that in the building. Oh, the good old boys network. There is racism there. There is bullying, and you all know about it. I have the receipts. I have the facts. It is real. It is not going away. I don't care how many times you try to sit there and not see it. You know us. Anything that I come up here, I'm not here to blow smoke. I'm not here for any other thing but to make Gaither a better high school for all children. My kids are the type of students that you want in your school. I have six children. All four of them that have graduated have averaged a 3.7 GPA. Not, I'm saying average. My kids with disabilities, my kids without. When are you going to start listening to parents? I urge you, there needs to be a meeting with parents and the administration. Say something good about Gaither. When the hell are you going to do something good for parents that I can come up here and say something good about Gaither? I don't have a problem with Gaither. I never did. I have a problem with the administration and a lack of follow-through. If you have a meeting with a parent and you say you're going to do something, just do it. If you're not able to do it, we're all human. We get that. We've been promising, oh, I'm going to get back with you. It never happens. When are our schools going to understand? Parents are not the enemy. Maybe it's your thinking that is.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, board members. My name is Alex Quinto, and I serve as the Regional Manager for Safe and Healthy Schools with Equality Florida. I'm also a former school counselor, and I have spent years walking alongside students and educators from across this state. I want to begin by expressing my sincere thanks to the board for recognizing Juneteenth, an important moment to honor black freedom, resilience, and the unfinished work of justice in our country and our classrooms. But I'm also here tonight with a deeper concern. For consecutive years, this board has acknowledged Pride Month through formal proclamations, and in 2024, a recognition of Pride Month. Those proclamations and recognitions sent a clear message to LGBTQ students, families, and staff. You are seen, you are valued, and you are a part of this school community. This year, however, that recognition is missing. And in its absence, the silence is loud. And let me be clear, this is not about a piece of paper, but it's about what our students see. When other districts across the state are backing away from inclusion, when rainbow flags are taken down and safe space stickers are removed, our students are watching to see who still stands with them. When you name Pride Month, you affirm our humanity. You tell LGBTQ young people that they matter, even when the world feels heavy. You recognize that the contributions of LGBTQ educators who are showing up every day in classrooms while navigating fear, confusion, and frankly exhaustion from the constant politicization of their identities. I know that the environment that we're in has created a chilling effect, but fear is never a good enough reason to turn away from our students, not now and not ever. At a time when LGBTQ students are being targeted by policies, rhetoric, and erasures from across the state, visibility matters. Affirmation matters. Saying happy pride may seem small, but to a student walking through the halls wondering if they belong, it means everything. This district has the opportunity to continue to be a beacon of inclusion and to show that Hillsborough stands firm in its commitment to equity for all students. Recognizing Pride Month like recognizing Black History Month, Women's History Month, and even Juneteenth is not about politics. It's about people, and it's about honoring the diverse identities that walk into our schools every day. I urge you to reconsider what message this board sends by choosing silence over solidarity, reaffirming your support for LGBTQ students, staff, and families, just as you have done in previous years. This is not controversial. It's compassionate, and it's consistent with the values of this district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Carmen, and I'm a lifelong Hillsborough County resident. I'm a business owner and a taxpayer here in the county. I'm here to discuss many things I find alarming happening at our schools right now. Since it's Pride Month, I don't think I can say it better than Alex, but I'll begin by the fact that I'm deeply disappointed in the school board for not making their annual pride proclamation today. I've proudly watched you make this welcoming gesture annually, welcoming and embracing the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and non-binary community. I understand the proclamation was largely ceremonial, but in a time where LGBTQ plus, LGBTQIA plus rights are being stripped away by a government, a small gesture could have gone a long way to help your most marginalized and vulnerable students feel safe. Isn't the safety of your students your job? Related to that, I am here regarding the superintendent's unilateral, unilateral decision to ban 600 titles. That's over 10,000 books from the school library bookshelves, overriding existing process. This sets a dangerous precedent. Most of the books from the list, which we know is not always accurate, features mostly queer as well as BIPOC main characters and are written by mostly queer and BIPOC authors. The cost of this ban is not only financial. The ban is, the ban removes, pardon me, the ban is a blanket erasure of stories from school library bookshelves. Students deserve to see themselves and the circumstances of their lives reflected in a library's books. Limiting people's access to books does not protect them from life's complex and challenging issues. What kind of message does this send to your queer and BIPOC students, of which there are many in Hillsborough County? Does it send the message that their stories can be so easily dismissed and removed? How does that contribute to the safety that your students feel entering the school halls every day? In a time where budgets are tight, I was shocked by the high estimated cost to review the books from the DOE list, somewhere between $350,000 and $500,000. This money was found and immediately available in a budget, in the budget, and without question is being spent. But I imagine a future where this money could have been spent on something actually better for the students. How does this second guessing of your highly qualified media specialists who've already vetted the books once, how does that make life easier for any of the students? Your media specialists deserve better. They are highly trained professionals who deserve respect. They love the students and form collections around your students' needs. They care for their students' well-being, and I don't believe that having them redo the review of these books makes it better for them. Let parents make decisions for their children. Parents have the right to guide their children's reading, but parents should not be making decisions for other parents' children, specifically a small group of people. No matter how loud, whether it's the government, the state government or not, should not be dictating what books other people's children are allowed to read. Thank you.
Can I please have speakers 21 to 25 line up as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Harrison Lundey. I live in Hillsborough County, and I am the Public Policy Director for Voices of Florida, a black LGBTQ and women-run organization amplifying the voices of marginalized communities throughout Florida. On behalf of Voices of Florida, I do want to start by offering my gratitude for your inclusion and recognition of Juneteenth this year. Our community does thank you. As an organization that values the diversity that exists in this county, I want to share my perspective on the board's decision to exclude a proclamation of Pride Month in this agenda. I wanted to highlight how important it is for students to have access to as much support as possible, and to remove a proclamation of Pride Month from this agenda is a conscious choice that affects queer students and staff throughout this county. This comes all too conveniently at the same time as the conscious choice to remove 600 titles from our libraries, our, our library shelves because of right-wing pressure, pressure from people who don't even live here, pressure from people whose kids don't go to our county schools, and they're making legislative decisions for our elected officials. So let's be clear that the decisions made to remove these books and to remove a proclamation of pride from the agenda are purely, purely political, even though these are just stories that teach our county's children what it's like to be different, what it's like to experience an affirming space, what it's like to understand experiences that aren't just our own. And I've sat in committees in Tallahassee during legislative session as the state government was voting to allow these book bans to happen. The things that they said in those committee meetings should enrage each and every one of you. They called gay people and gay teachers essentially groomers. They tried unsuccessfully to ban pride flags or depictions of pride flags in all spaces throughout the state because they thought they were so concerned about indoctrinating the next generation of children. And what this body is, is doing by allowing these book bans to happen, what this body does by allowing the exclusion of a proclamation of Pride Month from the agenda is this body affirms those statements. This body chooses to affirm the words of radical right organizations like Moms for Liberty and Turning Point USA and some of the most dangerous people in politics. Now, there is still time to resist these fascist marching orders from the likes of Ron DeSantis and Donald Trump. There is still time to acknowledge the diversity that exists in this county when it comes to the queer identity. Because I used to be a queer student in Hillsborough County Public Schools myself. I didn't know what pride was. I didn't know what it was like to be gay, and our community's lack of comprehensive sex ed meant I felt wrong about being who I was. These decisions to cut this important axis are a slap in the face to our community's parents, our community's educators, and it's an insult to all of our intelligence. Our schools are meant to provide support, and we can do better, we should do better, and we shouldn't be caving in to such radical pressure from the state government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Joan from Hillsborough County. I'm here to speak as a citizen on the book banning and the decision to not recognize pride unlike every year prior. I think it's a shameful decision and will continue to be until it's course corrected. To abandon the most vulnerable students in the school system gives a green light to bigots to harass and intimidate vulnerable queer students. Conceding to the bigotry targeting bullying and bullying by a right-wing governorship will not end here. All it does is further embolden their actions to encroach on the independence of local government and undermines your credibility and popularity among your constituents. The more you concede, the more you will lose, and the more damage it will do to our most vulnerable kids in the process. You cannot simply step, step back and wash your hands of responsibility. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Galen Cahill, and I'm a former student of Hillsborough County Schools and a current fellow with Equality Florida. I would like to advocate for the board to make their Pride Month proclamation as they have done in years prior. However, I am not going to take my time up here more so to address the community members, parents and students and staff in the audience. I, it is all too often easily forgotten the history the queer community has had to endure. It's a history of oppression, violence, plague, and resilience. It would be, not be an understatement to say that our community has suffered some of the greatest injustices that this planet has ever seen across every continent. In the face of adversity, we've had to, we, in face, in face of the adversity we've had to face, we've carved out this little corner of the world and decided to have a month to ourselves to unabashedly, unashamedly, and proudly celebrate who we are. As the attacks on the liberties of those who came before us fought so hard to secure for our community are once again under attack, it is an absolute slap in the face for our allies to abandon us in a time like this, even for something as small as a proclamation of support. These things matter, especially with the rates of suicide attempts in queer youth as high as they are in this day and age. I lived through the Hillsborough County public school system. I went through eight years of education with you all. I graduated from Middleton High School, their engineering program, and I can tell you that the amount of support you give to your queer students is not enough. I'm not asking you to suddenly bolster all of that and to change longstanding policy because I know that is not something you can do that quickly, but I am asking you to make a proclamation of support, to be there for your queer students, and to start trying to stand up for the injustices that occur towards your students and in your system. If the board doesn't hear this message, then I hope my community members do. The failure to acknowledge the action and the suffering of our predecessors is not the real problem here, but it is symptomatic of deeper issues with a lack of real care for our queer youth. It is simply performative in what will become another straw of hay on some poor child's back already struggling with far more than kids their age should be having to deal with. The only real solution is for us to build space and community, not just for all our youth, but for all of us to grow and thrive, and the school board may fail to do that, but I do not think that we have to. Thank you all for your time, and I would once again like you to make a Pride Month proclamation.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Brooklyn Berkowski. I am a public speaker most of the time for my company. My eyes are up here. I know your Facebook posts are very important to you, but I promise you, I'm right here looking at all of you, not looking at us. Every single person who's come and stood in front of you and spoken has spoken and, excuse me, has done something that is considered one of the scariest things a person can do in life. They are coming here as parents and community members to speak to you and taking on something that is so scary, and I want your attention. Now that I've talked for 30 seconds about having your attention, I'm here to talk about book banning. The next few questions are rhetorical, and I'll provide you answers so you don't have to answer them for me. Do you know how many titles the Hillsborough County school system has banned since 2021? 389,037, almost 400,000 titles. Do you know where Hillsborough County Public Schools K-12 education ranks? We're 22nd, dead middle. Lastly, do you know where Hillsborough County Public Schools rank in the reading recovery since the pandemic? 45th, and all of you know that we are the seventh largest school system in the country. Those numbers should speak volumes. I provide you these statistics to shine the light on how much money, time, and resources are being wasted, and the individuals who are being impacted the most are our children. The future of our country, the future of our county, is being impacted. I will leave you with these quotes from our previous amazing Librarian of Congress, Carla Hayden. Books are supposed to be windows to the world, but they also are mirrors that allow people to see themselves. You see yourself, and that's why it's so important for young people to see themselves or to read about experiences that they're having, because it validates you, because you've seen it in a book. Literacy is fundamental to the pursuit of happiness. So many doors are closed to those who cannot read. Everyone in the world has a right to happiness, and with that comes the right to read. As a parent, I'm telling you to stop allowing non-parents, non-community members, to tell me how to parent my children, which includes but is not limited to the Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Mrs. L. Johnson, and I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm here as a concerned parent to raise an issue that I believe affects many families and our school community, the breakdown in communication between parents or caregivers and school personnel, particularly administration and teachers. I understand that there is a formal expectation for staffs to respond to parents within a specific timeframe, but I ask you this: Who is responsible for upholding that standard? When department heads and administrators fail to follow protocol, how can we expect teachers to take it seriously? Without consent accountability, the policy becomes meaningless. Even more concerning is the way this lack of follow-through ties into something even more serious, the failure to enforce the Bullying and Harassment Policy Manual 5517.01. This policy, in theory, should protect our children from persistent mistreatment, but in reality, many parents and caregivers have watched our children suffer ongoing mental and emotional distress due to bullying that is dismissed, minimized, or mishandled. And worse, when administrators fail to act, delays in investigation, or even obscures evidence, it sends a chilling message that the safety and well-being of our children are secondary. As a parent, I do not come to you lightly. I come after learning, excuse me, after leaving unanswered emails, unreturned calls, and unexplained silence. This is just something that just happened recently. I come because our children are hurting and parents are left in the dark. Policy 5517.01 is only as strong as its enforcement. Clear communication, accountability, and transparency must not be optional. They are essential for trust and for the safety of every student in the district. I respectfully request the board to explore more ways to support the school in establishing more consistent communication, expectations, and follow-up procedures. Whether that's a communication liaison or a better system for tracking inquiries, it would go a long way in strengthening trust between families and the school. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Barb Tepeki, and I live in Hillsborough County. I wish the State Department of Education and the State Board of Education would respect the people and the process that our district has to review books. I learned what that was last summer at a school board hearing. I heard that when a parent had a complaint, the school librarian gathered a committee of teachers and parents to read and review the book. If they kept it in the library, the parent could appeal to the district. Then the district head of library services gathered a committee, including the district's school psychologist, district's social worker, and curriculum heads. They read and reviewed the book. If they approved the book, the parent could appeal to the school board. I went to one of those school board meetings. I had read the book about serious family welfare issues. I thought it was difficult to read but worthwhile. After public comments at that meeting, board members shared what research they had done after reading the book. I was thankful to hear such a variety of thoughtful and intelligent comments from the school board members, no matter what their final decision was. At that meeting, a majority voted to keep the book. I wish the State Department of Education and the State Board of Education would trust and respect the people and the process of this district. I wish everyone would research the American Library Association and PEN America to learn more about book challenges and the rights of parents, schools, and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Melissa Nordback, Hillsborough County. School concurrency provides coordinated planning among local government entities and the school district to ensure that school capacity keeps pace with residential development. It is a state law that mandates there is sufficient school capacity available to serve the families moving into new subdivisions with school-aged children. Without sufficient capacity or mitigation agreement, housing developments cannot gain approval under Florida statute. Proportionate share mitigation first started in unincorporated Hillsborough County in November 2018. There have been 97 proportionate share mitigation agreements totaling almost $95 million in payments by developers that allow them to build their subdivision without seats available for new students. These payments are to be used for construction of a new school or expansion of an existing school. Also, these agreements require the district to provide 100% impact fee credits to the developer. This results in schools with already failing levels of service absorbing new students prior to a new school being built, if there's even one proposed in that school boundary, enforcing current students to change schools by shifting development boundaries, and not being able to collect impact fees as the new homes are being built off-site. Infrastructure costs are typically borne by the school district. An even more developer-friendly policy in 2022, legislation was passed that only gives the school board 30 days to complete a school concurrency review if a developer submits a mitigation proposal. Hillsborough County is not the only county facing this challenge. On May 23, a lawsuit was filed against the Polk County School Board claiming their development approvals violate school concurrency laws. PSF Objective 2.4 states the county shall provide for mitigation alternatives that are financially feasible and will achieve and maintain the adopted level of service standard. The school board can decide to accept a mitigation proposal if it will maintain the adopted level of service standard. If it does not, you have the authority to deny. These policies basically gut school concurrency. Language and interlocal agreements need to be updated to protect students from overcrowded schools and taxpayers from footing the bill for a developer's unsuitable project. The school board needs to start pushing back on legislation that usurps home rule. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that ends public comment. Thank you all. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. I need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Member Perez and a second by Member Gray. Please vote when your lights appear. Member Perez. Okay, there it goes. There it goes. Sorry, there was a delay. All right, the motion passes unanimously. I will now call in Superintendent Ayers to highlight our administrative appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, we had seven principal appointments on the consent agenda, so I'm going to take a moment and kind of go through each of those, some of our, some new principals to our high schools, middle schools, and also an elementary school. So we're going to start. We can get it loaded up. So Ms. Culpepper, Candace Culpepper, where you at? There she is. Come on down. Come on over here, Ms. Culpepper. Come on down to the center. So board members and our community members, Candace Culpepper is our new principal of Spoto High School. Ms. Culpepper began her HCPS career as a science teacher at Tampa Bay Tech High School. She remained there until 2012, when she briefly relocated to Louisiana, then returned in 2014 as a teacher at Hillsborough High School. Sooner, soon after her return, Ms. Culpepper was appointed Assistant Principal at Durant High School, and in 2019 was promoted to Assistant Principal for Administration. And in 2022, she transitioned to Sumner High School, and shortly after her arrival, was named Assistant Principal for Curriculum at Sumner, where she currently serves. Ladies and gentlemen, Candace Culpepper, our new principal at Spoto High School. Congratulations, Candace. Congratulations. All right, our next appointment, I think I saw Mr. Turner out there. Mr. Turner, come on down, please. Mr. Eric Turner, our new principal of Farrell Middle School. All right, all the principals have some fans out there. Mr. Turner started with HCPS, serving as a social studies teacher at Franklin Middle Magnet School in 2009. He also had teaching assignments at Dowdell, Farrell, and Greco Middle School, and served as subject area leader and teacher talent developer. In 2020, Mr. Turner was appointed Assistant Principal at Rampello K8, and in 2022, he transitioned to Farrell Girls Preparatory Academy, where he currently serves as AP, and now, Mr. Turner is our new principal at Farrell Middle School. Congratulations, Mr. Turner. All right, and we have, back up. There we go. So Dr. Berry is not here, but I did want to acknowledge Dr. Henrietta Berry, who's our current principal at Young Middle Magnet. She is going to be our new principal over at Greco Middle School. And Dr. Berry began her career as a teacher at Young, Tomlin, Junta, where she also served as a counselor. 2010, she was appointed AP at Junta. She remained at Junta until 2015. She then transferred to Orange Grove Middle and served as AP until 2019, when she began to return to Junta. In 2020, Dr. Berry was appointed principal at Young Middle Magnet. She's done an unbelievable job at Young for us, so with that, she has been transferred and moved over to our new principal of Greco Middle School. So Dr. Berry, wherever you are, congratulations. And we'll move on to Pierce Middle School, and Elizabeth Padilla. Where you at, Elizabeth? There she is. All right. Very excited for Elizabeth. So Elizabeth, Ms. Padilla, began her teaching career in Puerto Rico in 2001, teaching kindergarten through fourth grade. From 2008 to 2020, she taught Spanish at Madison Middle, Franklin Middle, Plant High, and Williams Middle Magnet Schools. In 2020, she was appointed Assistant Principal at Sargent Smith Middle School. Later that year, she transitioned to Greco Middle School as an Assistant Principal. Ms. Padilla was appointed AP at Benito Middle for the 24-25 school year, where she is currently serving, until today, where she is our new principal now at Pierce Middle School. Congratulations. All right. Glad to see all the Pierce faculty out. All right. I know I saw Mr. Haley out back in the back there. John Haley, come on down. All right. So John Haley is our new principal of Williams Middle School. Mr. Haley began his career at Hillsborough County Public Schools in 1989. Eighty-nine, huh? As a teacher at Tampa Bay Technical High School. In 1996, he was appointed AP for Student Affairs at Oak Grove Middle School. 2000, he was appointed AP at Memorial Middle School. In 2005, he was appointed principal at Memorial Middle School, transferred to the principal position at Madison Middle School in 2006, and in 2011, Mr. Haley was appointed principal at Franklin Boys Preparatory Academy. Mr. John Haley is our new principal at Williams Middle School. Mr. Haley, congratulations. Congratulations. All right, and our next is our new principal over at Dawson, which some of you, I think, will recognize, Milady. Milady, I know I saw you earlier. Come on in. So Milady Estacio, our new principal of Dawson Elementary School. Ms. Estacio began her career working for the New York Board of Education, designing, implementing, and evaluating training programs. She was welcomed to Hillsborough County in 2003 as a teacher at Robinson Elementary. She served as Assistant Principal at Wy Mama Elementary from 2005 until 2010, where she was appointed principal. 2014, she transitioned to Thompson Elementary as a principal, and in 2023, she left Hillsborough County to accept the role of Director of Elementary Curriculum with Volusia County Schools, where she currently serves. Well, I'm happy to say, she's leaving Volusia, coming back. So our new, our new principal, glad to have you back, Milady, our new principal over at Dawson Elementary School. So glad to have you back to Hillsborough. I got a lot of pressure on this last one. Sabrina, Sabrina tested me with her last name. Got to get this right. I won't be able to deal with it. Come on down, Sabrina. Sabrina Shama Lang. All right. So Sabrina Shama Lang is our new principal of Shi High Elementary School. Ms. Shama Lang is a product of HCPS, graduated from King High School. Go Lions! I think it was Ms. Ayers was your principal, too. I found out that a couple days ago. She began her career in Hillsborough County almost 21 years ago as a classroom teacher at Shi High Elementary. She also taught at Bing, Lamb, and Potter before returning to Shi High in 2018. In 2022, Ms. Shama Lang was appointed Assistant Principal at Chermonte Elementary, where she serves today, but today, she is our new principal at Shi High Elementary. And I also want to recognize Ms. McNeely, the board member from Alachua County. The reason she's here is that is your, your aunt, who's an Alachua County board member. So very, very, very proud of all of our, of all of our new principals, so very proud of all of you. So very proud of all of you, and congratulations. And Madam Chair, that's all the appointments.
Thank you, and congratulations, and good luck. All right, now the following items will be heard. C 102, and if anybody wants to clear the boardroom, you're more than welcome to. It's going to be a long agenda meeting. C 104, C 402, C 403, C 404, C 405, C 502, C 601, C 706, C 711, and C 1001. I'll wait a moment. A long moment. We'll take a short recess. So we'll take a short recess.
I'm excited about Shi High. She's going to be good. Shi High, Sabrina.
Can you hear me? There we go. All right, Board members, we're going to move on to our discussion agenda. Item 102, Adoption and Purchase of Recommended Instructional Materials for Advanced Placement, Physics and Business Education. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, this adoption for advanced placement physics and business education instructional materials will provide, will provide updated textbooks and digital resources for students and teachers. So you're aware, per Florida statute 1,006.283 and School Board Policy 2510, the district must provide a 20-day public review period and conduct, conduct a, conduct a public hearing before the board can approve the purchase of newly adopted materials. As you're aware, that public hearing was conducted at the June 2 board meeting. Newly adopted materials must be individually voted on. That's why it is on here, not on consent, as rather as a discussion item.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C 102. I have a motion by Member Perez and a second by Member Runden. This item is for newly adopted materials and must be voted on by the board separate from the consent agenda. Any questions or comments from the board? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to 104, Hillsborough County Public Schools Agreement, Curriculum Associates LLC, and Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Elevation Platform provides schools with real-time data points to target instruction to enhance English language acquisition and improve academic outcomes for English language learners. Elevation provides for the accuracy of the documentation necessary for FTE related to English language learners. In addition, the platform maintains required records, records to ensure a district's compliance with the Florida consent decree. And that is our agenda item 104, Elevate.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C 104. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Runden. I pulled this item. And I spent a long time with both Ms. Margato and Tracy yesterday answering my questions. So I appreciate all the information. I am excited, and I know that, we can't put the cart before the horse, that eventually maybe Focus will fill this space and we'll be able to have an in-house program that will be able to kind of cover the needs that we need to. I was glad to learn that we were able to use this, aside from our synergy debacle, to make sure that we were able to, to track and count and support our ELL students. I can't lie, I'm a little disappointed that they weren't able to customize the curriculum to use the strategies that our teachers would find to be supportive. But I understand that, you know, we're trying to be physically responsible, and if our teachers say they're not using those strategies, then there's no point to pay for those. So really, those were the only questions or comments I have. Member Combs, are you in the queue?
Yes, I just wanted to make a couple of comments since you pulled this, Chair Vaughn. I just want to thank you. This is one of the few contracts that I see where there's a decrease there. I see a decrease from 582 to 335. And I know, just because District 1 has a large ELL population, that this Elevate program has really been very strong and has really helped a lot of our students. So I just want to thank you for your leadership, Melissa Margato. Very excited to have Jessica de la Prida now work in the ELL position. So I'm very excited. This is very, very important because our lang, I mean, just the other day at graduation, one of the students who had come over a year ago, they were, they were our unique senior, and they had received a full scholarship after being here just one year and did not speak English. So it was pretty amazing. So thank you for all the work. That's all I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights Do you want me to wait for Member Perez? Okay. All right, the motion passes with Member Perez being away from the dais. We'll now move on to 402, Health Insurance for 2026. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Board members, this is our health insurance renewal for the 2026 year. So on October 29, 2024, our District Health and Board workshop to discuss self-funded health insurance. Since that time, our Human Resources staff, Dr. Patton and Dr. Schatzberg, have had ongoing meetings with board members, district leadership, and union leadership regarding our 2026 renewal. The district's Health Insurance Committee met on April 30, 2025, to review medical trend data and to consider plan design options that would help mitigate a projected increase of 40.7%. Today, we are bringing before you an agenda item that is $26,589,000 lower than it would have been had we maintained a fully insured plan in 2026. Here are some highlights of this 2026 renewal. Aetna will continue to be our health insurance carrier. Three new plan designs will be offered. Employees will continue to have access to a $0 premium plan. Employees will continue to have $0 copays for CVS Minute Clinic, CVS Virtual Care, and behavioral health visits. Also, employees will continue to have a wellness program that rewards healthy behaviors like annual preventive care and reaching wellness goals. Madam Chair, that is 402, our health insurance renewal for 2026 with Aetna. And of course, Dr. Patton and Dr. Schatzberg are here. Any questions regarding this agenda item?
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C 402. I have a motion by Member Perez and a second by Member Washington. Member Gray, Member Runden, and Member Combs pulled this item. Member Runden, do you have any questions or comments?
Sure. I'd be more than happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for reminding us that at the end of October, we did have a workshop, and I do appreciate all the members of the audience that attended that workshop. And during that workshop, the district, the members of the board did say that we'd like to move into a self-insurance type of model based upon the fact that we knew from a premium standpoint, we were going to see a rise in our insurance going up around, I said 25 to 30%. I believe now you're looking at 40%. Where I have a problem with this is not whether we're using Aetna or we're not using Aetna. Where I have a problem with this is, I believe there's a lack of communication between the school district's HR department and the board. Because when you're bringing an item that's going to increase our health insurance cost by $22 million and not to have gone after and provided us with a selection of opportunities on what we could or could not have provided to our employees, I find to be irresponsible. This is costing our district an additional $22 million without any choice. The only option we have come to us, with the only option they investigated, was Aetna. At no time do we run an RFP. At no time do we go to any other carriers to bring subsequent plans or options for our employees. And I, again, I do not understand how we can go about doing business without running an RFP, without running options. The one thing that our staff, our board asked was that we maintain as much consistency for our medical coverage. That doesn't mean it had or had not to be Aetna. It was we wanted to make sure our staff felt comfortable with the services they were receiving. But we don't have an idea on whether or not that could have been done in any other course. Aetna may have been the option we chose, but that was never provided to this board. They continue to have meetings with us without giving us additional choice. They would come and have meetings with us and tell us, "Look, we're going to be less than we would have been. Look, we're going to have the same thing for our employees." But yet, we're still spending $22 million more, and we have yet to bring options to this table. We have yet to investigate other possibilities, other creations of other plans. Again, I'm not saying whether Aetna is the right option or the wrong option. We've just never been given the opportunity to make that decision. And that responsibility falls on you, Superintendent. That is money that's coming directly out of our staff salaries. That is a half a step. And to not bring any options to this board, I find, again, irresponsible. And so I will always vote no until you give this board full disclosure and full options of what health insurance could be, what options we could have. But to tell us because it's less than it would have been, but we're doing the best, how do we know that? You can't tell me that. Your HR department can't tell me that. They can't tell me any other self-insurance program is better than this because they never got quotes on what it would have been. So at the end of the day, we're spending $22 million more on a healthcare coverage without any options of choice. So with a lack of option of choice, you told us what we're going to vote on. And I'm going to vote no, because it's irresponsible, and we could be putting that money back in our employees' pockets and possibly giving them better medical care. We don't know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Runden. Member Gray, you also pulled this item? Did you have questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a few questions. So, and I want to thank Ms. Schatzberg and Mr. Horstman for, and Dr. Patton, for spending many, many hours with the board members. And you know how I feel. So I also have a tremendous hesitancy. You know, I've gone through the insurance, self-insured, group insured for years. It has been years. And, you know, right now, I'm looking at this particular item and wondering, again, about the actual bidding process. I would have liked to have had other bids just for the arena of financial judgment. I will ask you, and I'm always troubled about the Aon. You know, we've been dealing with them for 20 years. And I, I know I missed it, what, nine years ago? I suspect I should have asked about it then, but now we are still going with them. It's almost as if there's a monopoly. And it's made, the decision has come from a, an RFP committee. So my question is, why are, why are we not seeking another agency other than Aon? And how much power does this RFP committee have on this decision?
Thank you for that question, the opportunity to respond. We'd like to give you a little bit of feedback on Aon and their history, as well as the reason why we haven't gone out to bid for them, and what our plans are for the future. Dr. Schatzberg?
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. That is a great question. So we have been with Aon, our health and benefit consultant, for a long time. I think the folks at home might not even know about Aon. They know that we have our health insurance through a health insurance carrier. But since we, as a school district, aren't in the business of health insurance, we work with a consultant who is, has a cadre of subject matter experts, like actuaries, pharmacists, attorneys. When it's time for bids, they help gather the information together, and then the health insurance committee votes on that. I will talk about that in just a second. I will say that the last time we went out to bid for our health and benefit consultant was in 2020. And we are going to go out to bid for them in January, because it will be expiring in June of '26. So we will get right, June of 2026 is what I should have said, sorry. We will be going out to bid at the beginning of the year, and we will be looking for great ideas. Any consultant team that applies, we're going to be asking what they can bring to the table. In the end, they, with our health information, they help us analyze information, but we have to follow Florida procurement laws. So when we have a health insurance committee come together and do a procurement bid for our health insurance carrier, it is the voters, everybody around the table who makes that decision. Our health and benefit consultant does not go out and say, "We want you to apply," or they don't just bring people to us. We work through procurement, and they bid the process, and whoever applies, applies. Then the insurance committee does their votes. Our insurance committee is made up of our unions, our Classroom Teachers Association, HSEF, HASSA, and some other district personnel. I've kind of gone a little long there. Did I answer your question?
Oh, yeah, with the last part, the, the problem with that statement, it's made up of HASSA, did you say HASSA?
Yes, ma'am.
And then CTA. I mean, that does not, that does not envelope all of the amount of constituencies that, you know, that we're really giving all of our employees. That is a small percentage. But that's, you know, Ms. Schatzberg, what I'm after is, when we have a monopolized situation, which is what I think for 20 years, and when we have a committee that's made up of a small portion that stands for our employees, that you just mentioned, is this going to be the same committee, the same RFP committee, that will also make decisions when we come on new, when we receive new bids in January 2026?
So I would say not necessarily. The health insurance committee does the health insurance carrier, but when it comes time for looking at our health, health and benefits consultant, we will look to other departments to find out who works with our benefit consultant. For example, the actuaries will help do some reporting for our finance team, so we'll have some folks from there. We'll probably have folks from risk management. The people who work with the health and benefit consultant will be the people who are voting.
Yeah, I would just want to make sure that we have a robust bidding process in 2026. I am hopeful that we don't go with the same necessary committee members, the same, nothing against Aon, but we have to have much more vigorous types of bidding. And I know you know where I'm coming from. The last point I want to make is, since we are not in the healthcare business, yet we are now going to have a, I think you called it a department manager. So what I would like to see is a plan, such as Pasco, a plan that shows the layout of the staff, not only from Aetna, but also from our Hillsborough County Public Schools, that will include the actual services provided, you know, in, in real time. I just need the succinct list. Example is in Pasco, they have health clinics, and we talked about that. So what services? Then, when you have the sustainability question, in one to five years, will we be adding those services? In other words, adding to the benefits of our employees. That's very important for them to know and for us to know as board members. So, you know, I'm asking for that kind of plan, just so I have good talking points, if you will. And the reason I'm voting for this, it's not because, I mean, I have a tremendous amount of questions still, but because we will lose up to $18 to $60 million if we don't go to this plan. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, we know in looking at our projections for next year, that if we don't go into a self-funding plan, we will pay at least $26.5 million more in profit margin to the carrier. At this point, we know what projection, what projected claims are, and a health insurance carrier needs to plan for that, and then they need to make money on top of that. So if we were to stay in that fully insured structure, we would take the large number of claims that we're expecting and add $26.5 million on top of that. So by going self-funded, we're going to take away that profit margin, and we will just be paying the claims. We'll continue to work with Aetna, so we'll still have them adjudicating claims. We'll still have three onsite folks helping work with our employees. We will, we have wellness folks here, everybody that will continue to make sure that our employees are healthy. And the department manager that we add will assist us in monitoring claims as well, because we've got to have them helping analyze and help us recognize trends. And I did want to say too, our health insurance committee will begin to meet monthly, starting in '26. They're excited about it. The unions are excited about it, because for the first time being self-funded, we'll have access to our own data, so we can begin to look for trends and identifying them quickly versus waiting a year out and then look at making changes in another year.
So, and thank you for that. So my, my final recommendation is based on So my final recommendation is based on the fund balance. If we lose any more money, I am very worried about where we're at for various reasons. I will agree to this, but I do want a plan, and I think my time is up. Again, thank you, Ms. Schatzberg, for all the years that you and I have been working together on this, and Dr. Patton as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Combs?
I thought it was in queue later. But just a couple things. I mean, I know that it is, this is huge. I mean, I think there are a lot of employees who work for just health insurance. And I think that's a fact because health insurance is so expensive. I think when people are worried about losing a job or something like that, or as they think about retirement, the number one thing they think about is health insurance. There's no question about that. I see people all the time. So as we've had to kind of move in health and self-insurance, and that was a close vote, it was a four-three, but that's because we had no options, no matter what. I mean, to clarify that, we really had no options. Just to be clear, what were the two options if we went for self-insurance with whoever or no self-insurance? What would that look like?
So I want to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly.
Like, I mean, we were going to spend $26 million more no matter what, right?
Correct, correct.
I mean, and the other thing that I think about is, I do think we need to go out for an RFP, but I do think it takes time because with the committee, it's going to take a lot of time because you have to think about, we have 23,000 employees. Not some small insurance company can cover that. And Aetna has half a million members in Tampa alone. So it's really important to know that whoever we go has got to be a large enough insurance company that can cover that. You can't find some small insurance company that sounds like, hey, they can do a great job. For most people, what they care about, can they stay with the same primary? If they have to have surgery, can they have surgery? Those are really important factors. And I think when people say, "Well, we haven't moved." We had Humana for 28 years, and in the last year and a half, we just recently moved to Aetna. So we have to think that when we are looking at whoever we go with, it can't be some small box health insurance. And I know last year was a very difficult year. And as I see the budget coming, teachers are not going to get a lot of money because it's not going to come from the state. So we have to give whatever we can. I think for this year, we want to provide consistency for teachers. We want to provide consistency to our bus drivers, our security officers. If someone knows that they haven't paid insurance, we don't want to all of a sudden change that on them. I think it takes time. As we go out for an RFP, we have to look at that. It's going to take a lot more than six months to come up with an RFP because the last thing we need to do is lose teachers now when teachers are leaving left and right. So I think if, for me, as a teacher, if I came in and I'm not getting that big of a raise, and now you're also changing my insurance, I can't see my doctor, you know, I may start thinking about another career. So as much as I think we need to go out, I think we need to be careful, I think we need to be consistent, and we also have to see whoever, what they promise and what they deliver. So to think that we have some monopoly and we've been with Aetna forever is not true. We were the Humana for almost 30 years. So I think that's an important thing that we don't talk about. So the most important thing for me, I think, is to make sure all of our employees have insurance that they can count on. We went through, last year was very, very difficult with synergy. We've been through a lot of challenges every year. We need to have some years where teachers can walk in, you know, our paraprofessionals can walk in, and they can know that there's some consistency. And get that feedback from everyone as we move and looking at those big boxes and what health insurance can do. Because I know for, for me, I know you, when I called you one day when I had some changes, that was my biggest concern was my health insurance. That is the most important thing to most people. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question. What, what, do we have increases on benefits? For example, for example, providers, can they see their providers? Are they with the same providers?
Yes, sir. They'll be able to see the same hospitals, same everything.
Because number one, I think that's very important to keep your providers. What else increase do they have on this one we are doing? Are we, are we giving any extris for them?
So we will be talking about on our next item, a bundled surgery item that will allow our employees to have access to free surgery. That sounds crazy, free surgery, but it's, you know, depending on the surgery that's happening, they could save money and go to, into a bundle surgery option. So we'll talk about it in the next item. So that's there. We will continue to have the ability for them to have free telehealth 24 hours. If somebody would prefer to go to the CVS medical clinic, they can, Minute Clinic, they can get free supports there. And our health, mental health benefits continue to be no co-pay.
Okay, now, last one. On your committee, how many people you have on your committee?
I should know the number. I would say it's probably about 15 people, maybe?
How many?
Let's see, it's on here, hang on, and I'll count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 people.
16 people on the committee?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that committee been together for a long period of time?
It has been. Sometimes people will retire and they'll be replaced, but yes, and it's really, it's a great committee because we know the trends and we know kind of where we've been, and we work really to make sure that we're providing our employees the best insurance they can. I will say, everybody on this committee that I see here has our health insurance. So when we are making decisions, we're making decisions about our own healthcare and our family's healthcare. The committee works tightly together. We work to make sure that everybody feels good about it because it's our family. So, and I know when I'm leaving there and I'm going to be going back to my department and talking with my employee benefit staff, they're all, everybody's going to look at it from their own lens to find out how it's going to impact them. And so I think our committee really does a good job of making sure that we're meeting our employees' needs.
I think that's important.
One of the important points about the committee is that it's a collaborative that we have had with the union and those that participate on it, and we want to hear their voices. We make sure we support and provide the information for them to then make decisions. So we sit down and have that discussion, and we discuss every aspect of it to allow them to, if they agree, disagree, for us to come to consensus on it, and then that's when we bring it before the board.
Good, because I think it's, no, you have something you want to say. What I don't want to be lost in this as we talk through, you know, RFP or not, what health insurance company. I think that the big point here is, is the district's ability to move to self-insurance. We've been talking about this since 2018, so I don't want that to be lost in some of this other costs and what health insurance company, RFP, et cetera. This has been a big deal over the last seven years to get to this point to where this district moves to self-insurance. I can remember my first day as superintendent, that was one of the charges from many of the board members was moving us to the self-insurance model. By doing that, came from our finance team, the ability over the last number of years to be able to build that fund balance up, to be able to then save money as a school district with agenda items just, just like this. So I just want to be clear there that this is, this is a big deal today. They were moving to self-insurance, this puts us with arc, with other school districts. We were one of the few remaining that were fully insured, which in turn caused extra costs because we didn't have the fund balance to be able to cover that, that self-insurance. I just wanted to make sure that that is clear. You know, we can continue the good discussion around the RFP, Aetna, what that looks like moving forward. But moving to self-insurance is a big, big deal that this board has, has made clear for many, many years to move to that, to that model. So, thank you.
Thanks for the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Washington. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a few things. One, clearly, if we do not move towards self-funding, it was made pretty clear that we would pay over $26 million more a year, which, you know, would be also, you know, would also affect employee premiums, and they would increase greatly. Talk about, you know, insurance being expensive. I mean, it would probably double what they would be paying in premiums. You know, I'm, I am very concerned about when we do go back out for an RFP. I mean, I want to, and this year is up, and I know we discussed this at a workshop, and we seem to, the majority of the board wanted to stay with Aetna. I'm really concerned, given the lack of interest by some insurance companies to engage and respond to RFPs in other school districts. I'm, I'm more nervous about who is going to want to engage with us around an RFP. We may want to go out for an RFP, but we don't know if anyone's going to come to the table. So that makes me really nervous. I hope that landscape changes. The other thing, just to remind people, is that just because we're with Aetna doesn't mean that in three, four, five months, you can't see your doctor or go to your preferred hospital because they decide what type of insurance they're going to accept. So in three months, Advent Health may say, "We don't accept Aetna anymore." Or, you know, your cardiologist may not accept Aetna anymore. So we don't control that regardless of, you know, so we can provide some stability, you know, with, oh, making people feel like, oh, I can keep my doctors, but in three or four months, that could change, not based on our choices, but based on, you know, other, other places. So I just, I don't want people to think because we're making this choice today, nothing's going to change in their healthcare, because it could very well change tomorrow for some of our employees. It happened, it's happened to me. So it just, you know, it just happens, and it's upsetting. But, and in regard to the RFP, I understand you have a committee, and it's made up of this diverse group of stakeholders, but at the end of the day, this board will decide if we go out for an RFP, not your committee. And I want that to be made really clear to the superintendent and everybody else. This board will decide to go out or not to go out based on what's happening at the time for an RFP. Your board is valuable in that it will look at data, it will give us data, but at the end of the day, we're going to decide as a board whether we're going to go back out and put this out on the street or not. So I want that to be made clear. You know, and, look, I hope we can save some money for our employees, or at the very least, as premiums increase, which I know they're going to, it's not going to be as painful as if we were not self-insured. And, you know, I have a family plan. It's extremely expensive. There are times that I pay for MRIs and CT scans out of pocket because it's cheaper than going through my insurance to the insurance company. And so that's crazy to think, you know, you pay for health insurance, but it's cheaper if I pay out of pocket for my MRI. So, you know, I think we do a good job, given what I hear about other organizations and businesses. We're offering, you know, our employees many different options for their insurance. And, you know, that, that is, as some of my colleagues said, a very important aspect to why they want to work in Hillsborough County Public Schools. So I hope we can continue to keep, try and keep costs from rising too much and keep it, you know, as affordable as, as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of questions. I want to make sure we understand that. I don't want employees to get the wrong idea. Their plans are changing. And if we created, first question, if we create another plan through a different self-insurance or we create a self-insurance, could they have gotten their same physicians and things like that if that's the plan we created?
So it would depend on what the other health insurance carrier, their, their network of doctors?
Well, remember, we're going self-insured, so we have the ability to work and create a plan outside of a network provider if we choose with a consultant. So there is ability to do that, or, and so that, could that happen? They could still keep their same providers?
Do you mean could, we could negotiate directly? I'm sorry, I want to understand your question.
If we create a different plan, would there's a possibility of them maintaining their same providers? Could they have the same doctors?
If we have a different plan?
Yes.
It's quite possible, yes.
Okay. Even if we stay with Aetna, could a practice physician choose not to stay with Aetna?
Absolutely.
Okay, so everything is up in the air. The other question I have is, if I'm correct from your previous meetings with us, their out-of-cost and their deductibles are going to go up no matter which plan they now have, correct?
That's true. And we, I'm glad you're pointing that out. Yes, we are having some plan design changes, and it doesn't have anything to do, however, with going self-funded. So I don't, I want to make sure that anybody who's watching knows that we would be having this discussion either way. We've seen our, our claims surge over the last several years, and so we looked at our design, we looked at designs in other districts, and really, in the private industry, the designs that we are putting out are actuarially, actuarially sound and really where we need to go. So we are going to be having some choices, our employees will be asking them to make some choices on three different plan designs.
Correct. And all of the deductibles are increasing for all of our employees?
Yes.
Okay. So, and there is, although I understand what you're saying, there was an ability, if we went for an RFP, to recraft that and could have changed that model. So by not going after an RFP, which I remind you, Superintendent, was October of last year, so we did have a year. Like, let's make that clear, we had a year. The other thing is, I would remind board members in this packet, there is no contract with Aetna. When we approve this, we don't know what we're approving. I just want to remind our board members that right now in our packet, we do not have the contract with Aetna. So if you approve this, you don't know what you're approving. Am I wrong?
It would be the same contract that we were going to be meeting with.
But again, this item does not have a contract attached to it, and since we are now self-infunded from fully unfunded, without knowing what our boundaries are or any of our details, if a board member approves this today, they do not have any idea what they're approving.
I would say that it's following suit and that it will follow the same RFP that they agreed to when we did it a few years ago.
But then we would be fully insured, ma'am. Yes, because the last contract we saw was a fully insured contract. We've never seen a contract under the self-insurance guidelines. We have no idea how that's falling because you've not provided us the information. So I once again remind our board members that you will not see a contract that you're approving.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Perez?
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to the claim search. Okay? So, Superintendent, we take pride in having, you know, staff that's been with our district for years, right? What's the longest standing staff member that we've had? Can anybody tell me? Fifty?
Is it?
Fifty-six years? Okay. So, I know as we age, you know, let's admit it, we start feeling things that we've never felt before, you know? And that comes out of nowhere. So my question is, with the self-funding, are these issues also taken into account? The fact that we have older staff and that the comorbidities are higher? How does that, how does that affect us with aging staff?
I'll share and then have Dr. Schatzberg share. That does impact us. However, being self-funded, we have the ability to look at the claims and create programs that are going to help employees with those particular issues that they might have, whether it be diabetes management, whether it's some heart issues, whether it's, you know, musculoskeletal issues. We can create a program around that, the fact that we're self-funded, it allows for us to build that program. Dr. Schatzberg?
Thank you, yes. And I would also indicate that per state statute, our retirees are allowed to stay on our insurance. So we do have some folks that even as they're Medicare eligible, like to stick around. So we, we continue to work with Humana as well, though, but we like to make sure that we have a good vitality program for them to make sure that they are doing their preventive exams. I spoke with someone yesterday about making sure that as we have our health, health fairs, that we are keeping them on schedule and making sure they're taking good care of themselves.
Okay, so there's ticklers for retirees that need those reminders and, okay, awesome. Thank you. That's, that's all I wanted to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. So, you know, I'm conflicted on this item as I've been very transparent with you guys from the beginning. First, I want to say I appreciate the constant meetings. You know, while I do agree, if there's not a contract, that's concerning. You have been very transparent and answered all my questions and showed me the information. So while technically I agree with Member Rendon in the fact that, you know, there's a concern about a contract, I'm very aware of what we've talked about. You know, I agree with Member Rendon in, in some cases, to the point where I feel like there weren't enough options discussed with the committee and an understanding of that. A lot of my frustration comes from, I don't really understand what happens and what the conversations are in the committee, and pretty much the way that it's presented to us is, we're basically just rubber stamping whatever the committee decides, and we have very little input in that. So I appreciate that Dr. Hahn made the clarity that we are the deciding board and that we ultimately take responsibility and have input in this. You know, Mr. Porter, I do have a question for you because Dr. Patton and I weren't quite sure. Are board members legally allowed to sit on these committee meetings and hear the discussion happening?
I don't think that's a good idea. I think you're going to be ultimately voting.
I don't think that's a good idea, I think that you're going to be ultimately voting on it, and so, it's better to keep that separation.
So, is there a way to see the discussions that happened in this, in the committee by asking for the transcripts to be pulled?
Are they transcribed?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, we can look at that, then.
Okay. Because my concern is that the people on the committee might have an understanding that in order to keep a free plan, this is the only option that they have. And when, there are things that I'm concerned about, such as the $4,000 deductible, which I find extremely alarming, although I know that you say, a majority of our patients have not even come close to meeting that, or if, if there are concerns where my concern is, and while I appreciate talking about, you know, our older employees, which I am now falling under, um, we want to attract younger families, right? We need to attract a younger workforce who's going to stay with us through a long period of time. And if they can't get insurance because it's not affordable, I think that there should be a more thorough and robust conversation with the committee about the advantages and disadvantages of maybe possibly not having a free plan, charging a little bit more, but allowing and offering an affordable family plan for our families. There are people I know who want to be teachers, who are young and want to come work in our district, however, they can't rely on their spouse to be the one to carry the insurance. And the other thing I appreciate was that you did give me a cost comparison chart, which I asked to be shown here today, but there was some pushback about that, I'm not sure where we landed on that. That does show that we are comparable to other counties, except for Pinellas, who does an amazing job for Family Plans with Pinellas, shout, shout out to Pinellas, um, that we are comparable with Family Plans. And while I understand that, and we are trying to be competitive with other districts, I agree with Member Combs in the way that, when we talk about our salary range, and we talk about what we offer our employees, the base of it is always the benefits that they get. That's always included in the conversation. And as insurance becomes less and less affordable, and you have a board member talking about paying for their own MRIs, I wonder how much of advantage that is, and when we're talking about the next item, Kelly Services, and, you know, employees not choosing us because the benefits aren't strong enough, I think it's a more robust conversation we need to have with that committee and give them more options. And I feel like, really, the only option was, if you want to keep a free plan, this is the best that we can give for you. And I'm disappointed in, if that was the, the narrative of the conversation. Did you want to speak to that? It looks like you have something you want to say.
Yeah, thank you, it'd be, uh, I appreciate that. The, the committee discussed actually three options, because, uh, we wanted, we don't go in knowing what we're going to do. We came in with no plan design changes, recognizing that that would, uh, lead to a 38 and a half percent increase to anybody that had families, and there was not an appetite for having a 38 and a half percent increase for employees with families.
But that's still maintaining the free plan?
Still maintaining the free plan.
Correct.
And the, the second, and the free plan is in our contracts. Then there was another option where we looked at making the free plan a high deductible plan. As we looked at our high deductible plan, uh, there wasn't a lot of appetite for that because it, it's, um, it's not a great plan, not like the low PPO plan that we.
But that's still keeping a free plan.
So, keeping the free plan.
Correct.
And then, you're right, then we landed on the third item, because the third item allowed for us to keep family costs the same. If anybody picks the low PPO plan, they will, uh, if they're in the, uh, local plan now, they'll have no increase. If they are in one of the other higher plans, they will actually see a decrease in costs. So, there are decisions that we make, um, but you're right, it is, it is under the purview.
All three plans that discussed only offered around keeping a free plan. Again, my discussion is, there were no options given, whether that's a renegotiation with the union or not, and their decision to make as they come to the bargaining table, or whomever was in that committee, around with the option of a non-free plan that makes it more affordable for, for families that was presented. Am I wrong?
You're right, we did not talk about.
Okay, okay. So, I just want to, I just want to bring clarity to that situation, and that's where my frustration comes from, um, is that I think for a long time, we have to, a- and I understand that there's a lot of union members who are older, and there's value in a free plan. I utilize the free plan myself, so I appreciate it. But again, we have to look long terms at our families, we have to look at recruiting and keeping young teachers and young employees, and what that looks like, and giving them affordable healthcare. So, that's where my frustration lies. Um, I just want to remind people, I didn't want to go towards self-funding, I understand that, that it is a way that we have to go because it's going to be more affordable. Um, and I did not necessarily want to stay with Aetna, that was not my voice. Um, so, I, again, I'm going to be very conflicted about this item. What I would like regardless is more clarity to our employees around this, because just with what was included on the agenda item, I believe a lot of hysteria was started, and there was misinformation, and I think we should have done a better job about getting in front of that, and making it clear to our employees what is going to change and what isn't going to change. Um, and with that, I'm out of time, so I'll allow another board member, or a superintendent.
Just some clarity, because what I hear is, you know, board members, I have to provide you the information where you can make a decision and vote when you have enough in front of you. So, to, to explain why the, the contract is not in front of you is because the plan, the plan design is exactly the same, right? What, what is different is that Aetna does not have the built-in profit into the contract. So, with eight, with fully insured, there's a built-in profit, because they're taking on that risk. In the self-insured, we are taking on that risk. So, the contract would, would look different, self-insured, Ms. Rendon, uh, Member Rendon, to your point, uh, fully insured versus self-insured, but the, the reasoning was because, um, the plan was going to run exactly the same as it had in previous years. The difference is, is the contract will look different, fully insured versus self-insured, we are taking on that risk self-insured, that's what allows us to save money, uh, with this self-insured plan. So, um, what I hear is, um, from the discussion, there's not enough information for board members to make that decision tonight. I'm going to withdraw this agenda item, I'll bring it back to the July 8th, uh, board meeting. Uh, Dr. Dr. Patton, Dr. Schatzberg, bring back, uh, the contract, everything. Please, you want to go ahead?
The only, I, I, that's great, with, I, I do think it would be, I'd love to ask our, either Aetna or Aon, how that works with contracts in other districts? Do you have?
Yeah, yeah.
If you're going to withdraw the item, I think that's probably timely, um, when you bring the item back. So, unless the board members have any other questions, or unless you want to consider that, but, I mean, for withdrawing the item, the item is withdrawn.
So, yeah, and, and thank you, Dr. Schatz, I mean, you're just.
I just don't want to, uh, I hear you, I, I don't want to hear afterwards, it really is not something that happens, so I just don't want to be asked to bring something that I can't bring back, that's all I was.
Well, whatever, uh, uh, what, what I'll bring before the board, what we'll bring before this board is, all the information that we have, every bit of information, so you can make that bit, that decision, uh, we'll communicate with each of you what that looks like, uh, Dr. Schatzberg will communicate with, with Aetna, um, on that, but, um, I am withdrawing this agenda item, which will come back on July 8th with much more information, um, included with that contract. So, this, this, this agenda item, uh, 403, along with, uh, 40, excuse me, 4, 402, I'm also withdrawing 403, 403 goes along with 402, so both agenda items, 402 and 403 have been withdrawn. I'll bring back, bring back those to the July 8th, um, and those, the materials that we provided for you, but for both those items, uh, will include much more detail.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Ayers. Um, seeing that those are withdrawn right now, I'll move on to employee and student comment.
Oh, did you still want to speak on this? Do we still speak if the item's withdrawn?
Yeah, you can, it's just, the items were drawn, it's up to you if you want to speak.
Oh, sure. Member Gray, if you still have something you want to say?
Well, actually, I wanted it, uh, I mean, the, the board comments are emblematic of, we are not for sure understanding the plan, uh, we are not fully secured with the validity of the bidding process, we are not for sure, uh, understanding the parts of this, it's been a big question mark. I really think we needed more education, I think we needed to learn from other companies, if you will, because without knowing the full arena of self-insured or group insured, which is of course in itself, how are we to make very careful decisions on such an expensive item? So, my thought is, Superintendent Van Ayers, you read my mind, I think that's very, very good that we're going to go ahead and re, uh, redo and refine and re-educate the board members to the best of our ability. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair.
Of course, thank you, Member Gray. All right, now, we're going to move on to employee and student comment. We'll now take employee and student input, even though we hear public comment at the beginning of the meeting, it's sometimes difficult for employees and students of our district to attend meetings at 4:00 PM. There are many ways for employees and students to make their voices heard, including through union representation, representatives, emails, phone calls, one-to-one conversations, and public comment at the beginning of the meeting. The board wants to hear from you. With this section of our agenda, we're creating another avenue for employees and students to speak to the board. We're setting aside 30 minutes for employees of the district to speak to the board about any issues that are on your mind. This is not intended to be a discussion about specific agenda items on tonight's agenda, but rather an opportunity for you to speak to the board about any issues related to your job or the district. Each speaker will have three minutes, and I believe we only have one speaker, so you are more than welcome to come.
Good evening, Board, and Superintendent Van Ayers. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for recognizing the advocacy work of Ernest Wood and Tracy Brown that they do for the, uh, non-traditional sites every day. Um, I finally got to watch the, uh, June 2nd board meeting, and, um, after the busyness of closing out the school year and attending, um, the, um, principal trainings, and, um, for me, the makeup trainings, and, um, you know, just trying to get through trainings and interviews, and getting ready to start ESE. Um, so, I just want to thank you again for recognizing the importance of a safe environment, not only for my students, but for my staff as well. Thank you for recognizing Ernest's, Wood's, um, commitment to our sites. Um, I am positive that my staff knows that I advocate regularly to ensure the safety for all on my campus. Though I cannot force my staff to take trainings, I ask that all of them take several trainings to understand how to de-escalate the most aggressive behaviors that we have on our campus. Most of the staff are trained also for CPR and first aid, um, to respond to severe medical, to our severely medically fragile students, um, such as seizures and their feeding concerns. Um, there are systems in place, and we train regularly to practice response to both medical situations and behavioral situations. My student services team is not only there to provide for our students and their families, but they also support our staff as well. I'm confident that the staff that stay at Lopez will stay at Lopez because of the culture of care that I know I provide. I will continue to advocate for improvement to make physical environment as safe as, um, humanly possible, but I also do want to thank Mr. Ferguson, tonight, um, instead of asking for something. Um, I have three accordion walls that have been removed last week, and they are getting ready to, um, actually put up, um, solid walls so that my students cannot jump between classrooms. While in a gen ed class, uh, in a gen ed school, it might not seem like that's a big deal, it's a huge deal on my campus. Um, but I also want to say that that's a step in the, absolutely in the right direction. So, I very much appreciate the support and advocacy from all of you. Um, I have every intention of attending, um, attending tonight to say thank you. Um, I also wrote this letter to you, um, to thank you, but, um, I also wanted to bring to your attention and the public's attention, um, that, um, some of the work has already begun that I've asked for, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership. All right, um, seeing that two agenda items have been pulled, we will move on to 404. Increase in expenditures for Kelly Services, Inc., for the 25-26 school year. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, board members, you're familiar with this, uh, agenda item with Kelly Services. Uh, the proposed cost for our 25-26, uh, school year is to increase in spend as a result of adding, uh, specific ESE position substitutes, increase in the minimum wage in October 2025, more substitute through Kelly, uh, instead of other contractors, uh, and pediatric therapeutic services. These substitute positions are, are new possibilities since the previous RFP in 2020. Uh, budgeted, uh, due to number of instructional and paraprofessional vacancies, um, instructional vacancies, building substitutes, long-term substitute for approved leaves, and officer professional standards. Approximately 50% of substitutes used are to fill open positions. It is necessary to provide the substitutes for the existing school year and for the summer learning program. Uh, this also assists with recruitment, as 3,866 substitutes have been converted to employees of Hillsborough, of HCPS. Madam Chair, that's 404, Kelly Services.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C404. I have a motion by Dr. Hahn, and a second by Member Gray. Member Rendon and Member Combs pull this item. Member Combs, do you have a question or a comment?
No, no, Member Combs, will you go? Yeah. Member Combs, will you go, please?
Uh, yeah, I just have a couple comments, a couple questions. I think, um, Kelly Services has worked very hard, and I see that their fill rate has really improved. Um, just a couple question, couple comments, really, um, I want to make sure, like, we've talked a lot about RFPs tonight, to make sure that next year, that we definitely, it would have been nice this year, but to go out for an RFP, because I don't think any, any, any organization should feel like they're guaranteed to kind of have that every year, that it's going to get there. The other thing that is, I guess, alarming, disappointing to me, is when I look at 2022, and I look at that we spent $16 million on Kelly Services, and then I look at 2025, and I look at $50 million, I mean, that tells me one thing, you know, and then I'm looking at another contract today for Teaching for America, you know, last week, you gave me an EPS contract, I mean, you're, you're getting teachers from everywhere except where you should be getting them from, which is the College of Education, right? Or getting certified teachers. I think it's just really sad what's happening in, in our, in our nation, especially in the state of Florida, because no matter what, we are 50th. We can be distracted with all these things that are happening, but let's talk about the facts. The facts are, we went from $16 million for long-term substitutes to $50 million because people are not entering education in Florida, and although it's happening nationally, it's happening at the highest level in Florida. And I was just looking yesterday, we are now $12,000 below the national average for teachers. So, as we are 50th, we continue going, I don't know how much further we can go, maybe we can go into like, a third world country, getting salaries like that, so it's really important. I just think it's discerning to me, I want to go out for an RFP, but it's discerning for me that we keep looking for teachers, and we're not finding teachers. And just for people to think, if you're going to go to, um, let's say, the state of Florida, they create this idea of public schools, like, if the schools are not bad, we're going to create a school that really helps you, idea of public schools, but guess what? You don't even have to be certified to be a teacher there. Okay, so, let's make sure that we keep the facts straight, and that we remember, while all these other things are happening, what's really happening in our nation is that we are not focusing on education or the priority of education, we're funded 50th in the nation, vacancies are at the 50th, and SATs are at 50th. Those are all correlations together. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs, and Member Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Interesting that you said the, uh, the low pay of our teachers, uh, if you'll understand this, this particular item, um, our bus drivers get paid more than our nurses in our schools. So, uh, the importance of nurses, uh, well, let's get into something else first. The ESE, uh, the speech pathologists, you know, Kelly Services is branching out into areas they have not branched out to before. I understand there's a possible savings of money, that's a motivation, but I have to say, my fear, this is a slippery slope, because what I fear is that all these agencies, and I think we're up to eight, maybe more agencies, uh, and now we're adding Kelly, how are we going to be completely, uh, following the Florida statutes in compliance? When we deal with health, physical health, there are certain requirements that have to be met. Now, you've get, you get experts that aren't experts more and more in our schools, I'm not talking at you, uh, Dr. Patton, but I fear that the fidelity and the safety of our students are being compromised because these agencies, they're not, I don't, I'll ask you about the training, because that's, uh, ESE is big-time training, and so is speech pathology. I mean, that's, we're talking master degrees on many of those. So, now you have Kelly substitutes coming in. So, that's, compliance is one fear. The other fear I have is, if we don't do some type of salary study, because we know that $3, uh, $3 more per hour for an LPN and an RN will no longer, that will subtract the need for agencies, because suddenly, now, you're, we're even. So, what is more fiducially responsible? Is it to go ahead and get more agencies that are not trained, I'm, you're going to say something about training, but really, most of us are highly educated here, training for ESE, and training for speech pathology, whole lot of stuff. When are we going to go ahead, and I'm going to ask, uh, our CFO, Mr. Lewis, to do a audit, a study on the pay differential that is needed to raise the salary to be equal, so we don't need all these agencies? Now, that's my big, you know, spiel at the moment. Now, that's my big, you know, spiel at the moment, but back to the question, what training is Kelly going to have? I mean, we have substitutes, substitute, substitutes, okay? Now we're, they're growing. What training do they have? And be, sorry, I don't mean to talk at you, specifically in E S E and specifically in speech pathology, as I see on this agenda item, and speech occupational physical and speech therapists.
Mr. Horstman?
So the training that we have from Kelly, when we decided to expand the program, because I, I do just want to share that when I came onboard, the program was to get long-term subs. We expanded it to request E S E, and we only asked that because we wanted to make sure they were certified. So for us to verify what that requirement was, we sat down with Shannon Lesperance and said, Shannon, because that's your expertise, tell us what's needed. We also have a person from her team that works with HR to ensure that anyone that does E S E is certified. That person also works with Kelly to make sure that we are bringing individuals that meet the criteria to be E S E certified based off of what Shannon Lesperance shared with us is the requirement, based off of the state, because that's her expertise. So that training, we can get you a copy of what those things entail, but we did validate before we just started to bring individuals in. Are they meeting the criteria that she would feel comfortable with before they're actually sent out to the site? We also went one step further. We make sure that when we do have someone come, we don't just say, you're going to E S E. We sit down and have Kelly talk with that individual to find out, what area of E S E are you trained and certified in? For example, are you used to working with access points? Are you working with V E? So then they understand that it may not be, E S E is not just one big umbrella of one thing, but it can be a variation of things to ensure that person's prepared to go on that site and work with those students at that site for that specific area. Mr. Horstman?
In addition to Dr. Patton's comments, that the S L Ps, the O Ts, the P Ts, they are all required to be licensed as well. That is part of the contract that we've asked Kelly to provide us with individuals that have that background knowledge. Additionally, we will provide the trainings that they are giving all of their E S E teachers, regular teachers. It is volumes, but we will gladly forward that on to you.
So if they're certified, why aren't they not working as, for our district? Why are they working for Kelly Services? I, I don't understand whether they would get more of an income.
Many times they're looking for a, I'll call it a flexible schedule. They just don't want to work full-time. Many of them are retired. They want to take on just maybe a three-month position where somebody's out on a maternity leave or health leave, something of that nature, just the flexibility of a schedule.
So when we say that they're certified, which relieves a lot of us, right? Should, a lot of the board members I know are probably paying attention to that. And we know that they have background, then again, that goes back to why are we not paying these folks a salary so they can, not those particular ones, but why are we not raising the pay so we can go ahead and attract the full-time ones? And that's not your, that's a question that you, you are not responsible to answer, but that's the question that I have as well. So thank you for that answer, and I think it's an important one, that we know that our students are being taken care of with certified, background checked, et cetera, therapists and teachers. And by the way, remarkable Kelly Services, this is just for them to hear, because we, I've been working with them for many years. They have always partnered well with our district, and I, you know, I, I just wanted to throw that out there. So we want to make sure that that relationship is, is going to be improved as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand that we are, this is coming to the agenda item because we are up from our contract and we're going to renew for a year. I'm a little concerned there's no contract attached, so there's nothing for me to really approve. So that's my first concern. Where did it say that we have the ability to go for another year? My one question to make sure everyone's very clear on this, when was the last contract signed by Kelly Services?
The last time we went out for R F P was in 2020, so five years, five and a half years ago. It was a five-year contract with two, two-year extensions.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Also, I believe you said somewhere around 3,800 teachers have been employed now, and that was over a course of how much time?
That was since 2014, this current school year, since August of 2024, we've hired away from them 348 teachers.
So, I mean, I appreciate the fact that over the course of 10 years, they've, you know, brought in openings of 3,000, you know, 800 openings, except I do remember back in 2022, 2023 school year, we had almost 3,000 openings. So over the course of 10 years, it's kind of relative on what they've assisted with. I have a little different experience this year because my daughter was working with Kelly Services, so I see the experience that she went through. She hasn't been followed up with Kelly. She hasn't been offered other things, and so there isn't an encouragement for her to take on a full-time position. So that concerns me. Since I've walked this walk with her this year, she has appreciated the schools at, you know, the school itself that she has gone to work for, have been very organized, very attentive. The principals have everything ready for her to go, but as far as assistance from Kelly, we haven't seen it. And knowing that it's a five-year contract, I don't understand how we don't have a system in place, Superintendent, that we would know this contract is coming up, that we would automatically go out for a bid, to automatically renew it. That's one of the reasons that we've, we've mentioned this on this board since I have been here, that we don't like the automatic renewals because it doesn't pay attention to what we're doing. And there are other competitors out there, there are other things, but we have no idea if we're getting the best options. We have no idea if that's the best percentage that they're working with in other school districts to hire those teachers. We should, as a district, be more creative in trying to get the staff hired on, whether it's just for three months as an employee. We have different ways of doing that. It's a liability to our sta, our students when they're not employees, because then the liability, if they're hurt or something happens, we take that liability, we take that ability for them to contact because of that. We should always have employees over contracted staff because it protects our students as well as it protects us. And so we have more control of when they're going to be there, what actions they're going to do, what they're going to perform on campus. So I'm going to vote no on this, and I let HR know that ahead of time, because with knowing you have a five-year contract that should have given you a year to go after an R F P, and if you don't have a system in place as professionals, it'd be like saying, I know I start school in August, but I didn't get my school closing time. We know when it's going to come. A year is plenty of time to get an R F P. Knowing you have a five-year contract, it should be on your calendar. It's what we, we require our students to do, it's what we should require our staff to do. So without seeing the contract, because it's five years ago, I wasn't on the board, so let's make that very clear. So I don't even know what I'm approving if I approved it. B, I have no idea if that contract gave me an additional year because I don't have the contract. And C, after five years, we should have absolutely gone after an R F P because we've not been given a choice. So I can't approve this item at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Dr. Han?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, I'm not a big fan of reoccurring contracts. That's why I rarely approve them anymore. This was probably one of the first ones I approved early on on the board, and I did have, I did pull the old contract, so I knew it was just a renewal. You know, this is not something I'm ever interested in pulling back in-house, but I do think, you know, it is definitely time. We talked about doing an R F P this fall, so I look forward to that. You know, I think the bigger picture, as Member Combs said, is really building teacher pipelines. And, you know, we have multiple colleges and universities around our area. We, we have to stop thinking, thinking that just because we offer internships, that that's a teacher pipeline. That's not a teacher pipeline. And that seems to be kind of where we're at with a lot of these M O U's and partnerships with colleges and universities. We're, you know, providing internships. I think that, you know, building school, school district, university partnerships is what creates teacher pipelines, which of course includes internships and practicums, but it also makes sure that the curriculum being taught at the university aligns what we want our teachers to know when they come in so they can hit the ground running. Like, are they teaching U Fly within their coursework? Are they teaching DIBELS within their coursework in different colleges of Ed, not just USF, but we have St. Leo's, we have St. Pete College? I know that we used to have an M O U with FAMU because we wanted to diversify our teacher workforce. So those are the types of things we should be going after, including, I mean, this is a pathway to getting teachers in our district, Kelly Services, but these teacher pipelines are so important. You know, are our colleges and universities, our colleges of Ed's and colleges around this area, teaching courses on teaching in urban schools? You know, a lot of our schools sit in the urban core. Our, so our job in creating these teacher pipelines is ensuring that teachers who are coming out of our local teacher certification programs are ready to teach in our schools. We also should be sending guest speakers into the classrooms, you know, to talk about curriculum that we're teaching and classroom management techniques that we're using. We should have opportunities for those students to visit our schools if they want to see different programs, to get connected. So by the time they graduate from whatever college of Ed they're in, they already feel a part of our district. And we've had this conversation many times, I've had this in my one-on-ones many times. And, you know, we can even go outside of colleges of education and recruit from colleges of business and engineering who have the content knowledge from math and science teachers, and we just, we just bring them, we teach them the pedagogy on, on how to teach that in our schools. So we don't always have, you know, we need to look outside of the traditional colleges of Ed too. You know, we have USF, we could tap into their business college and their engineering college and arts and sciences for teachers as well. So, but all of that isn't just putting up a flyer, it's building relationships with students. I want to end my remarks just by talking about Pasco County Public Schools. They have a program, and they've had it since before I was on the school board, because I partnered with them through the Anchen Center at USF and the College of Ed to build a pipeline from them into the College of Education. And they have teacher academies, not just teacher academy clubs, but actual C T E programs in a teacher academy. And I just want to read you something about their teacher academies that I strongly, and have been talking about for six years, and it's not gotten traction, we need to start doing here. Okay? The, the Department of Ed, Career and Tech Ed provides a framework and standards for this type of program, and it's about experiential learning. Developing future teachers while serving the community provides a powerful platform upon which to build the next generation of teachers. Students enroll in teaching classes because of their curiosity, but they stay because of the approach is unique in these academies. Students who complete the new teacher academy will also be provided with a mentor from Pasco County Schools to work with them through their college years to provide support. Incentives will be provided to students who return to Pasco to complete their final internship and join our team as a new teacher. It is part of their choice program. These are teacher pipelines, and I'm not really confident that we're doing much more than internships, which is the lowest bar.
Thank you, Dr. Han. Member Press?
Well, it's no surprise that I have an issue with Kelly. I've always had an issue with Kelly since I started on the board. But I want to ask, you have here that the fill, there was an increased fill rate of 10%. 10% of what?
Of the vacancies and absences of our teachers.
Is there a number?
Yes, but I don't have it. It was roughly 7,000, I believe, over the course of the, 7,000 days over the course of the last school year.
Okay. Because I think I spoke with Dr. Patton, that I tried to call Kelly Services with someone who is entrusted, and nobody answered the phone. On, am I correct? Yeah, nobody answered. She gave me the extension, I tried that, and no one answered the phone, to Member Rendon's point. And to today, I think that was about two weeks ago, today, nobody's returned a call for the message I had left. So, and between 22 to 25, their costs have gone up to 33,000, 33,222,257. I remember when I first started the board, I asked for a workshop, right, for Kelly Services. And understand that Kelly Services has a great idea, you know, with filling, but we are now in 2025, there's a lot of other services like Kelly Services who have the same resources, the same trainings, the same that, that teachers are going to instead of Kelly Services, to support them with filling spaces. Another issue that I have with Kelly Services is that there's a lot of our Renaissance schools that really needed the supports and didn't have those supports. They didn't, they weren't, they were not able to get the Kelly Services substitutes in those schools. And that's an issue I have also with Kelly Services. So, and I'm, I'm with, I don't understand why in five years we have not looked at other agencies, to be honest with you. You know, and we've waited till the last minute to, to look at these, to be honest. So I'm, I'm also going to descend on this vote because I just feel that they feel, I feel that Kelly Services feels like they, they are the only ones for us, but there are other services out there that will do the same thing Kelly Services does, but possibly at a better, at a better rate. But I think my no was when I've been trying to call Kelly Services for this potential substitute teacher, and I have yet to get a call back.
Thank you, Member Press. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question. What, what are we doing for recruiting people?
Short, short answer is we've hosted and attended hiring events. So for example, today, this wasn't instructional, but today we had our Application Tuesday, which we hold once a month at the I S C building, and we also had a hiring event for community service officers. In addition, instructional now, we, we obviously recruit our interns. We go to the universities when they have, I'm not exactly sure what each one of them calls it, but I'm going to call it a career day. So we're trying to connect with business majors, math majors, science majors of the, of the various types that were not in education programs. Additionally, we go to MacDill Air Force Base and try and recruit military families. So not only somebody that's in the military looking to retire or retire soon, there are family members that are holding certification or could easily obtain certification.
We bring in, when we go to recruit, because they got to have some type of bone to get them in. When we recruit, and when we are recruiting, do we take any extra people with us, maybe some young teachers or something like that? Because that's important to have. That's important to have so they can tell a little story.
We have not, but that is certainly a great idea that we can start hoping to, if it's during the school year, get permission from the principal to have somebody from their staff join us.
Because you know, that's the selling point. That's what sold me 42 years ago, a young teacher. He came in and I said, you know, I want to do that, because he, he had done a great job in the school district in Hillsborough County. And it, some, some kind of way, he put a light in my head to do it. And I did it for 42 years after that, and loved every minute of it. So have some people to come out, have some younger people to come out and recruit, because I, I think that would help you.
Yes, sir.
Make sure, make sure you go through that pipeline. That pipeline, like Dr. Han said, is so important.
Yeah, one of the other things that we did, when I came onboard and sat down with the team, I did say that we did not have a the team, I did say that we did not have a brand. There was no brand for recruitment. We posted the position. And so the More Than Just a Job campaign, which I'm sure all of you have seen, has been remarkable for us. It did not exist before. There was no way for us to tell people about Hillsborough County. It usually was word of mouth, but you know, those days of just hoping someone's going to hear about us, there's too many competitors. So the More Than Just a Job of working with communications to say, how can we brand Hillsborough County so we can say to people, come, and not make it about, I'm coming because of this, but that it's more than just a job, that you're changing lives. And if you've seen the campaign and the locations, we've been very aggressive with that. We also utilize social media and geo fencing where a lot of young people, if you want to use that phrase, I think older people too, but they prefer to use technology in order for them to look for jobs. It's not traditional that they walk in off the street and ask for a job, but they want to go and look online, they want to go to Facebook, they want to pick up their phone and use mobile devices. So we've taken the application and made it mobile. That did not exist before. So that's another way to make it easier for people to access it, as well as the geo fencing where they can go in and find out what's happening at the district and be interested in opportunity and through a QR code, go in and sign up and move into being a part of the district. So we're using different methods in order for us to recruit, not just traditional of where we just, you know, are going to events and hoping that individuals come. We also are partnering with other, the universities and colleges and having conversations around, again, the curriculum. How do we change the curriculum at the universities? And, you know, very proud of this, I brought this to the cabinet and said, it's everybody's job to recruit. It's not just HRs. And I think that's a confusion that people have, that HR is supposed to have magic dust, that we throw it up in the air and people come, but we need everyone to help us recruit. And so the superintendent made it a priority, and it's one of the things that we talk about when we have our cabinet meetings, that's one of our first priorities, to find highly effective people and recruit. So we're making the priority for us to do that. It's not something we're just hoping for. So, you know, resources like Kelly and TFA, which is coming next, is really a support system. It's not the only way that we want to fill positions, but at this time, because you pointed out the challenges, Member Combs, that's one of the methods that we're using to ensure we do have a teacher in front of a student.
Sounds great. You've got to keep working hard. Recruiting is very hard. I see you all working, but you've got to work a little bit harder. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quick, to Member Hahn's point, we did have teacher academies. We had it at Blake, we had it at Jefferson, we had, I think, over seven or eight sites that we absolutely trained those students to become future teachers. That was a real thing, and Member Washington remembers that. We need to get into the out-of-the-box thinking. We need to go ahead and go back to what really did work, and I know Kurt Browning was very instrumental in getting those kids to that stage and giving them a contract. You come back to us, here's a contract for you to have a four-year teaching degree, whatever. We have to start getting aggressive and assertive and not just, as, as Member Washington said, and we, Member Washington and us, we do give testimonials to the, to the, to the students, USF students. It does, it excites them, it makes them connected. So all those ideas that are mentioned from the board, we have to start doing them. We can't just rely on technology. Teaching is a nurturing, tactical, kinesthetic. It is not one that you press buttons and get people excited. You have to be out in front of the actual will-be's or would-be's to really get them into, not only to, to teaching, but get them into our district. So it's a competitive world with getting teachers. And if we're not competitive and sharp and quick, then we're going to lose that. So I would suggest, Dr. Patton, in deep utmost respect, think out of the box and also refer, and I know Shay McCray remembers those teaching academies, have them give you some background on what we just, we did before, and it worked. That's all I wanted to say.
Member Gray, what you're referring to is our, your, our urban teacher academies, they were at Blake and Middleton back, I don't remember.
In Middleton.
And 15 years ago. And part of that program was that, you know, if you went through the urban teacher academy and you signed that you would ultimately, make sure I'm getting this right, that you would ultimately come back to be a teacher for Hillsborough County, your, your college tuition would be paid for. There was some, yeah, good idea, and there was some issues with that, and ultimately enrollment, and we, we got to a point probably seven, eight years ago where, where the urban teacher academies, the enrollment, the numbers went down, the programs were, were, were cut. But that is something, thank you for the input, that is something, we, because there's no doubt, we need to think outside the box and, so we don't have contracts like this through Kelly where we're trying to fill teacher vacancies. We've got to think outside the box and heard, heard, hear you loud and clear.
And improve that system. If it didn't work, then find ways to improve it, refine it and make it relevant. Because 230 teachers short is in our face, and so that's enough for me to talk about right now. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Combs?
And just one, one last comment, and, you know, listen, I love all the universities, all the colleges in, in, in the Hillsborough County area. I think UT is great, but I just have to, you know, give a plug for USF because the, the new USF dean, and we've been talking about this a lot for years, I've been talking about getting a minor in education. It's really important because people walk out with a degree in history or a degree in psychology. I know many of you have kids and they walk out with lots of degrees, but a lot of times there's no job. So they did create this one-year program to get a minor in education. I think that's really exciting, that's very new, it's cutting edge. I think going out to those College of Arts, College, you know, all those places where people walk out, they graduate, and then they don't necessarily have a job. Most people don't know that you can become a teacher, but this is great. There's like five courses, the real core work, measurement, behavior, ESC, core things that are going to help them. So I think we need to continue promoting that. That's a one-year program that someone can walk out and be making over $50,000. So, you know, I think it's really important to, to move the lifestyle. I say this a lot because I do have a young, you know, have a young daughter who's in her twenties, and when I ask kids all the time, do they want to be teachers? 90% of the young people who used to be educators, they're all going into nursing. That's just a fact. That's just what's happening. People who are caretakers, who love people, who want to help people, they are going into nursing because it's offering more money and more flexibility. But we have to just show what a great job and what a difference you can make and really be pushing these minors. So I think that's very important. So that's all I was going to say, just that, that USF plug.
Thank you, Member Combs. All right, I have been waiting very patiently to make my comments. First of all, I do have a question. Why is there nothing attached to this? Why is there nothing attached to this? But it, but it's not this, it's a piggyback to ask for more money. We're not approving a new contract right now, we're expanding it. And is that why there's no contract? Because you're just asking for approval for more money?
In the future. Yeah, so this, this is, so this is a reoccurring contract, so the contract has already been approved. What the agenda item is, it's just an increase in expenditure because of the increase in costs for minimum wage and things that were outlined in the document. So it's, it's a reoccurring contract, so it's the same contract, but this is the last year of the contract, and it is a, an increase in expenditures for this one year because of the increase in minimum wage. Now, we'll tell you, moving forward, you know, we, I'll, I'll make sure that staff has all these contracts uploaded and attached, so there's more clarity in, for you as you, as you go and make that vote.
Okay, so first I want to clarify, we currently, this is what I've been quoted, have 600 long-term subs, is that correct? 600?
Yes.
Long-term subs. And I feel like I have a good perspective on this because, one, I worked for Kelly Subs for six years, and I also worked for the district as an in-house substitute teacher. And I also had my son with a substitute teacher for three to four months this year. I agree with almost everything that Dr. Hahn has said. I love her passion, I love her vision for what that looks like, and I absolutely 100% agree. Where we disagree is I do have an appetite to bring this back in-house, and I can explain to you why. My concern is that when we're outsourcing these employees, there is no incentive for them to help transition these employees to our district long-term. Because then again, what we're doing is directly competing with the employee, employees that they have to offer us. And so I feel like that is a barrier to being able to, what I would like to see from Kelly is information to the substitute long-term, long-term substitute teachers on what it would be like to join the district, of what the opportunities look like, if they can take a year college class, what the certifications are going to look like, and a concerted effort to help transition them if they're long-term subs. Because many of them, if they're doing the work, if they're showing up every day, if they're putting in those hours, would like to get paid what a classroom teacher gets paid. I'm sure there are some that for whatever reason don't want to transition to us, but I feel like it's a lack of information. And I think that as long as Kelly needs their workforce, they're not going to be true partners with us to transition those stu, those employees to be a part of us. I also have concerns about the quality of subs that we get, as well as the training, and not just the training, but the access to support and materials. You know, from my understanding, with my own experience, the only support that they get is from a department head who may already be overworked, who has to then give them the, the printouts or the criteria that they need, or a lesson plan that might be left to them from a subs, from the classroom teacher. And if they run out of that, they have very little to offer our students. You know, again, my, my son sat in a classroom with handouts for three months that weren't even the same pacing, were supposed to be focusing and studying what he needed to be successful on our standardized testing. And I'm lucky, my son was successful anyway. But how many students out there need that extra support? So, I mean, I could go on, we've talked about this, I don't know, 20 minutes at this point. You know my concerns with Kelly staffing. I think that aside from just going out for, you know, competitors and RFP, I would like to explore bringing it back in-house and what that looks like and creating that pipeline between us. If there's a difference because of cost, I want to know what that looks like. But I am also going to vote no on this item. So I just want to be clear with that. And then are there, Member Rendon, did you want to speak before, Member Rendon? Member Rendon? Okay. And then Mr. Porter. All right, hold on. Member Rendon first.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify, the fact that there's no contract here, there's no way to know other than you said, anyone said, that it was five years with an option of one. And so it's just the fact that without being on the board five years ago, and great that y'all remember that, but I'm going off of you guys just saying it's an option of a year. I don't know if we're increasing by only $70,000 without a contract for us to even know. And even when we have a contract that we have five years with an option for one or two years over, you guys have always brought it to us to extend that year. You don't just bring it and say, you know, that's why you're here, right? Because we're extending it. So the fact that you're extending it, you brought it, you should have put the contract on it. So I, I need to make that clear, that just because it's an extension of another, you know that, I don't know that, and I, you're asking me to approve something I don't have to read. There could be a change in that contract with Kelly. I can't imagine over five years Kelly doesn't have some language change in their contract. It just doesn't even make sense. I mean, we've got two attorneys in the room, how many times do you guys get a contract every five years? You don't see some change. So the fact that we don't have a contract sitting here that you want me to approve, whether you're extending it a year or two years or not extending it at all, should be attached.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Superintendent Ayers?
And I, and I don't disagree, and I will tell you, board members, moving forward, on, on every increase of expenditure, any reoccurring, those contracts will be, you know, will be attached for you moving forward so you can have clarity in the, in the vote that you're going to make. I just want to get, I want to be clear on where we are right now. All, almost every school district, large school districts utilize an external, either Kelly Services or other that are out there. This contract is an increase, increase in expenditures for our substitute services for next school year. We have, we utilize Kelly for our substitutes. So this is, this is to have Kelly Subs, to have subs in our classrooms for next school year. Now, what I've heard, which is two things. One, the district, you all have made it very clear, we're moving out for an RFP in the fall. This would be for the one year. But hearing from the chair, what I hear is, is possibly if we want to have a, you know, we could schedule an hour workshop to talk through what bringing it back in-house, if, if that's the will of the board, bringing that back in-house. Okay? Okay. So the chair will, will put in a request, but those are, I just want to make sure as we move forward in the fall, that, you know, staff, that we've got clear direction on what, on which way the board wants to go with that, either external, internal. But this, the contract that's in front of you is for substitute services for next school year for '25, '26. In the fall of '26, we will go out for an RFP or depending upon what happens with the workshop, which direction we want to go. But the item before you is for Kelly Services for next year.
Thank you, Superintendent, Mr. Porter.
Yeah, thank you, Chair and Board Members. Just to be clear, several of you have indicated you're going to vote no on this, which is your absolute right, and the board has an absolute right not to approve this. Before you do that, I think you need to hear from staff about what the implications of that are, just so you vote with full understanding and full knowledge. Because this is for substitute teachers for next year. Again, should not imply that this is a way to change your mind about voting, but you need to understand what it means to vote no in case the contract doesn't pass. So either Dr. Patton or the superintendent can explain what would happen if this contract fails.
No, I just wanted to say something quickly about not having a contract attached.
I'll recognize Dr. Hahn and then we'll hear from the staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand, you know, the contract hasn't changed, the amount, we're approving an increase in the amount. And I'm sorry you didn't get a copy of the contract. I pulled the old contract, you can, you know, I went on to the old agenda items and you can easily pull it. You know, I'm sure if you had requested it at one-on-ones, they would have provided it to you like I did for another agenda item here tonight. But I just want to reiterate that there's no changes to this contract. The reason it's before us tonight is to not approve a new contract, it's to improve the increase in the cost of these services that will continue to be the same as they were this year. Correct? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn.
Did someone from staff want to, did you, Dr. Patton, want to answer Mr. Porter's request?
Yes, so it's very concerning that we do not want to have this approved because of the fact that if it's not approved, then that means that there will be no teacher in front of these students where we have vacancies. Because we won't be able to go out and find an agency that will help us in this short of a notice to bring individuals in for the beginning of the school year. We understand and we hear what you're saying, that you have a concern because it was a five-year contract and we used the one-year extension. We also understand that you want an RFP, but we're concerned about putting teachers in front of students. Because that's where we're going to have the faulty, there's not going to be anyone there. There's not enough time, even though we're recruiting actively for permanent teachers, the pipeline for permanent teachers is not full enough that we're going to be able to cover. Because when you look at Kelly, I want to make sure that it's clear, Kelly is not just to fill vacancies. Half of what you're asking for in the monies that we're requesting is for us to fill people that are on vacation, that call out sick, that are on leave. So it's not just to fill vacancies. So even if you say, well, you know, we're not going to approve it, we're going to have teachers go on vacation, go out on maternity leave that are going to be sick. There's not going to be anyone in the classroom to cover because there won't be a service that we can reach out to, to find, to fill that position. So, you know, I'm, I'm imploring and asking if you would consider it. We understand your concerns, we understand that there's some challenges that you have with Kelly. Myself being new to the district, you know, it's been under two years that I've been here. When I addressed Kelly initially, when I saw the contract, I saw there were opportunities to improve it. So I did the things that were required to improve it, which was to include ESC bilingual, make sure that they were giving us individuals that we knew they were qualified and trained. We also did surveys to the principals to find out how they felt about the service. So we did things to change the program and increase the program. However, if we decide there is no program, we won't have teachers in front of students. Mr. Hortman, anything you want to add?
Just to piggyback on what Dr. Patton has shared, is not only the, the individuals, but there's, there's months of pre-work that must be done if it's another provider. Software that our teachers would be able to access for a day that they're out sick, requesting time off for whatever reason it happens to be. And as Dr. Patton indicated, with, with the school year that is almost officially over, approximately $17 million would be spent on just individuals missing time because they were sick, a family member was sick, their car battery was not letting them start the car, whatever the reason was. So that's, that's what I would leave it with as well.
Now, just, just to, you know, sum this thing up, this is, we've utilized Kelly Services since, I think, 2014 is the date, is the year, correct, 2014? This is, this is a one-year extension with the increase in expenditures, and we'll be very clear moving forward with what transparency in contracts. And then two, what this looks like moving forward with, will be very clear. Staff will be very clear on what that looks like with an RFP, or depending on Chair Vaughn and the workshop, if we want to talk through what in-house also looks like versus going out for an RFP, we can do that. But the agenda item before you is to have Kelly for one more year, which will be, which will be our substitute services for next, for next year and next year only before we go out for RFP or bring in-house and have that conversation in the fall. And it is my recommendation this agenda item be approved tonight.
Thank you. Thank you all for your input. Member Combs?
Thank you. And I was just going to say, you know, I'd love to see what that timeline looks like, what the RFP would look like. I think that's really important to see. I think that's really important to see. I mean, I think that assures us knowing that there will be an RFP in the fall. For me, I, I just think we have to support something today. I think when you look at, you know, we're six weeks from school starting, you know, there's teachers who aren't going to be out, maybe they're out of the country the first week of school, whatever it is. I mean, you have to think about things and we have to have a plan in action. So I definitely feel like Kelly Services has felt like a monopoly for the last five years, because they, they, every year, it's a five-year contract. It's like, they can give you whatever, and then this next year, they're going to ask you for even more money because it's a monopoly, right? So I think to make sure that we, we do an RFP, I'd love to see the timeline. I am going to support this tonight, because at the end of the day, we have to make sure, I just keep thinking about Tampa Bay Boulevard and thinking about all those kindergarteners who did not have a teacher, who had long-term subs. There was 153 students, one teacher, and the rest of them were long-term subs. If those students did not have that long, long-term sub, I, I just don't even know what would happen. So I, I just think our hands are tied. Kelly Services knows this, but they better know that they, they better continue giving us a good fill rate and also work on the training and everything, because we're going to have high expectations. I know there's several other companies, I, I've heard ESS, there's like so many other companies in the state of Florida, so we want to make sure that we look at all of them. But for me tonight, I'm, I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Perez?
Thank you. Thank you, Member Combs for that, yes. A timeline, because I believe Kelly Services thinks, like Member Combs said, that they have, they just have us, you know? And that is, that's just, you know, we should have already been out for RFP before this five-year contract, before we got here. And, you know, doing this extension, you know, at a cost, at a cost to us. You know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just a little perturbed about this, to be honest with you, and this cost. I, I am. I'm just, I'm, I'm very much bothered by this. Kelly Services has not been a favorite of mine's at all. But, I, like Member Combs said, I want to see a timeline sooner than later, and so that if we find something better, that it could start right after this year is done.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Gray?
I support this item. The bottom line, to be pragmatic, an ESC student without an ESC-trained certified human being, being a teacher, is a nightmare. And it's, it's just to me, a precedent for failure for those kids. Those kids who don't have a voice, those kids who have so many struggles. So, you know, to be pragmatic, I, I agree with every Board member and some of their hiccups about it, and I'm not so, you know, I'm not overjoyed about lacking a contract and some things should be tighter and we need to do a better job in getting teachers, I know all that, but we can't afford to have not a teacher certified in front of our kids just because of one or two hiccups. This has got to be moved forward. I support the agenda item. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. I appreciate all of my fellow Board members' comments. I understand the gravity of the situation, and I am glad that there are members who, although they may not agree with Kelly, are willing to place the priority of the turnaround time and make sure that we have teachers in front of our kids. However, I have been complaining about Kelly and having conversations with you and making it clear that I'm going to vote no on this item for years now. So this is no surprise, and honestly, I feel that even though I've said this repeatedly over and over and over again, we always wind up in this situation where if I'm not forced to vote yes on it, even though I have a challenge, it's put on me as the responsibility not to prepare our, our, our employees and our students for next year. And I'm not going to put that responsibility on, on me. Because I've been very clear with you and everyone else how I felt about Kelly, what my concerns were and what my expectations were. And if you were not able to get the pulse of the vote of the Board members previously and iron out these concerns, like, I'm not going to be in a position where I'm just going to continue to feel like I'm being held hostage, honestly, to vote on something I don't support. And I know that's disappointing, and it doesn't mean I prioritize, you know, the fact that we have a small amount of, of time or that I want to risk not putting a teacher in front of our students, but in good conscience, I can't vote yes on this. So, I just want to be clear about that. Anybody else getting in the queue? Okay. With that being said, with no other questions or comments, please vote when your lights sigh of relief, because it passes with myself, Member Perez, and Member Rendon voting no. Hopefully, hopefully this sends a message for next time. All right. And with that, we will move on to 405, Agreement for Services with Teach for America Inc. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as mentioned, this is Teach for America. So there's a need to partner with an organization that can help place teachers in our difficult-to-staff schools who are trained to lead students to academic achievement. Candidates will be vetted based on HCPS hiring criteria with a goal of placing up to forty teachers in our transformation schools during the 25, 26 school year. So I'm going to repeat that again, this is about forty teachers in our transformation schools for the 25, 26 school year. We will work with Teach for America to identify teacher training opportunities that best meet the needs of the newly-paced teacher group. In addition, non-Teach for America teachers will be invited to take part in all Teach for America virtual teacher training opportunities, turned alongside the Teach for America teachers and other non-Teach for America teachers across the state, and that is item 405.
Thank you. I need a motion a second to approve C405. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Perez. Member Gray and Member Combs pulled this item. I'll let you guys decide who wants to go first. Member Combs?
Hey, I, I can't beat a dead horse, you know what I mean? What can we talk about? You know, here we are. You know, once again, 2022, fifteen thousand dollars, 2025, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I mean, once again, you're going up so much that your expenditures because of the, because of the shortage of teachers. The one request I'd like to have is I'd like to keep the financial history impact. If we can keep that for five years, because I really can see a big, big, big impact from when 2022, you know, right around COVID, where all of a sudden we lost a lot of teachers, I'd like to see as we are, have contracts with, where we're, you know, Kelly Services or anything, I'd like to see a five-year historical part of that when the contract came. So that would be my request, because it's, it's very alarming to see these last two contracts when you look at, you know, Kelly, where it was four years ago, it's like quadrupled, and then here you are in 2022, fifteen thousand, and then 2025, a hundred and sixty thousand. So I'd like to be able to see that in a year from now, to keep seeing the historical movement, what's happening in education, what's happening as far as filling contracts, trying to find other places where we're getting teachers. I really want to keep my eye on that. For me, honestly, as a school board member, that's what keeps me up most at night. Out of anything that happens, besides the safety and security of students, is just thinking that a lot of students don't have a certified teacher in front of them, or maybe they have different people, or people who don't, maybe don't speak English as a first language. And when kids are struggling with so many different things in their lives, sometimes not seeing the same person over and over, it's, it's academic, it's social, it's emotional, there's so many factors involved. If there's something going on at the home, sometimes you, you're not able to see that when you have inconsistency. So it does really worry me, the contracts is probably what worries me most as a school board member, and that all, it all comes down to the Department of Education, the Florida Department of Education not paying our teachers. So if we could just keep that and, and let me see the historical difference of that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I've talked about this in our one-on-one, this is just another tool in our toolbox to have teachers in classrooms, but, you know, for me, I'm always looking at the big picture, the long-term goal is sustainable teacher workforce, you know, sustainable classrooms. And many of Teach for America teachers, more than half, leave after two years. Three to five years, you got, you know, maybe forty percent in, thirty percent, and after five years, you've only got twenty percent to stay. And really, our goal should be long-term teacher workforce stability. And most of these teachers, you know, they leave because of burnout. We're putting them in our most challenging schools, our most challenging classrooms. They're not prepared like individuals who go through traditional teacher preparation programs in colleges of ed, and the fact of the matter is, they burn out. And, you know, it's a great Band-Aid, you know, I really don't want forty, fifty, sixty, a hundred of these teachers in our schools, because it's just going to make the teacher workforce even that much more unstable. I don't even want forty. Twenty, okay, you know, but I, I don't, I, I don't want this to grow, because it is not a solution. We know from research, academic research, that children learn best when school districts have stable teacher workforces. And this does not provide us that. I'm not a fan of Teach for America, you know, for that reason. So, you know, I, I think it's hard to convert a lot of these folks, because the fact that, you know, they're, they're not trained the same way a traditional teacher is trained, and they're really not prepared for a lot of the urban core schools that they're, they're put into, not just here, but around the country. So, thank you.
Member Gray?
Let me ask a question on this one. So, the Teach for America, the teachers that I have met have always been very impressive to me. They're eclectic, they're international, they bring a lot of information, cultural Are they segmented just for the high-need schools, or are they distributed throughout the district? And I'm talking grade levels, middle school, high school, elementary school.
So they're not segmented for the high, high-need schools? However, they do specialize in urban areas. And so that is one thing that Teach for America says, that they, they train, it's second-career teachers, individuals that used to work in a lab and decided to become a teacher. So they do very intensive training with them for them to go into the area to become teachers, so it's a second career. But we make sure that those individuals go to, we, we take a lot of care in placing them, and I'll let Mr. Hortman give you more detail on that. But we do go through a lot to ensure that those individuals are going to be placed in the right area. In this instance, to Member Hahn's point around us going from twenty to forty, we said this year, we wanted to go from the twenty to forty, because we've had challenges in filling our positions in the South County. The South County, I've seen double digits in open positions, and that's a concern for me. They've had substitutes. Teach for America are permanent teachers. And so when they join, we're saying that twenty of these individuals will go to South County to ensure that we have a teacher, a permanent teacher, in front of those students in South County.
Mr. Hortman?
Member Gray, the twenty TFA teachers that just completed this year were placed at fourteen different sites, so they, they like to have at least two at every site. That wasn't a hundred percent this year. But I've got some, some data as far as what they were teaching, not specific courses, but their background, their, their certification areas. Okay? One, speaking math and science specifically, we had one middle school math person and one high school math teacher. We had two middle school science teachers, one high school science teacher. We paid for twenty TFA teachers for this year, they supplied us with thirty-one. Of those thirty-one, fourteen were elementary, six of them were middle school, and eleven of them were high school. Additionally, the twenty that we had, that we were paying for essentially, are all returning for next school year, 2025, 26 school year. And then, as Dr. Patton said, we put in our agreement with them for this coming school year that the, the new twenty, if you want to call them, the additional twenty, will teach at our sites down in South County area, that, that, as Dr. Patton indicated, have had a difficult time filling positions.
Well, that's to say the least. If you go to Shields Middle School, you're, you're looking at a tremendous amount of deficit, but also Tampa Bay, as a, a Member Combs knows. So the sustainability, how many years have, do you have a mean average amount of years that the Teacher of America, Teach America folks have stayed in the district?
So, we, we've only been partnered with them since 22, 23, so this is...
So this is really not known yet. We don't have a, whether it's long-term or not.
Correct, yes.
But to the point that we do want sustainability, but I think it comes down to a board philosophies, I'm hearing. So, whether you think the most critical item is to have a teacher in front of a child, or whether you can get perhaps a better deal, you know, what we're looking at is, do we want a teacher in front of a child that's certified come, this coming year, or shall we wait for a better opportunity? So I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote for this, because I am of the philosophy, I want a teacher in front of the student. I don't care, you know, grade levels, especially your lower grade levels, which brings me to the question, how many are, do we have a lot of the elementary students, I mean, elementary level Teach for America? I hope I'm getting that.
We had fourteen elementary teachers.
Yeah, that's what I figured, and that's, that's your critical learning years. That's so, so very important. And Reddick and YAMMA Elementary, there is such a huge deficit, and that's South County. But at any rate, the other question I wanted to say with Member Combs, you're darn right it's getting expensive. Teaching is going to be, it's a commodity, because there is so, there's not a big demand to be a teacher, and there's just so many openings that they are going to be, they're, it's a high commodity, a, a human resource, and it's going to only get more and more that way. So these contracts are going to cost more, and I, I understand that. And that's a sad reality, but that is the reality. So, they, you know, the ball's in their court. We're not paying them enough, it's amazing we're getting the teachers we are having. So, yes, the only other thing I have, and look at the contract on page three of 23, you're going to have to go ahead and make this an adjustment, 4.2. It has that, the contractor agrees that it will offer minimum, minimum essential coverage, and it refers to the Affordable Care Act. You need to put a question mark on that, because that in fact may not hold true as we're getting through the political year. That might change. So I want you to be alert on any contract, I shouldn't, there's only so much you can do, but be aware that things are very fluid. So contracts, you know, even though I, I took the trouble to read this more carefully just now, I hope to read them all carefully, but sometimes we can miss one or two statements, but it's your job to make sure that it is up to date. Is that correct? You, you can remark. Thank you, Dr. Patton.
Yes, and we work very closely with procurement and legal. So all of these contracts, we do have the attorneys sit down and go through them with us, with a fine-tooth comb, sometimes grappling back and forth around the language of what they've submitted to us. It's not just we get it and sign it, we do go through a deep dive to make sure, particularly with these that we just brought before you, because we knew there'd be questions. So we will make sure we do that before we bring it.
All right. And I thank you, and, and I thank our attorney, Mr. Gibson, as well. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Thank you very much. So when we talk about the fact that we started with Teach America in 22, 23 school year, that's now three years in, how many, because traditionally from this program, according to their website, it's an average of a two-year program, how many of them have become permanent employees with us?
From the first year, all of them now. When I say...
They're all?
It was three the first year.
Okay. Okay.
Just being transparent. However, when they are hired with us, even they, even though they are a part of the Teach for America program, they are employees of HCPS.
Correct.
They are not on a, on a work visa or anything.
Have all have stayed? Have all three stayed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so of the second year, how many have stayed?
They will all repeat, return.
They've all returned. So we, we're on a good track record, which is good. I also see from Teach for America that if they don't have a certificate, Teach America requires them to begin getting that certificate. So, in order for them to stay within their program, that they're required to already start getting our teacher certifications.
That's correct.
So that, I mean, that's a huge plus. I think, you know, at the end of the day, we have to, we always have to have recruitment, ways in which recruitment, this is a recruitment tool. But I would like to see, instead of it bringing piecemeal to the Board, if you could bring the entire package of what you do for recruitment, and if we're working with multiple agencies, we see the multitude of contracts, because we are, you know, one by one by one, we really don't know how much we're spending on recruitment when you bring a contract here and a contract there. Showing us all together exactly what you're spending in recruitment by bringing all the contracts to us, so we can see that in its entirety, and then those contracts that... And then those contracts that, I mean, quite frankly, if you don't, we should be going out for bid for everything, right? Talking about our international contracts, you know, what I've learned is that there are some agencies that actually do paras and some other things, which we know, we have language barriers right now with some of our, um, ESE students, where we don't have paras that have that. But we've got some ways in which we could build on some of that if we're bringing in some of our international, um, teachers to be able to work with our ESE or even paras, custodians, so many other options that they could be working on. So for me, I need to see your department, and I need to see in its entirety, what are we doing for recruitment? Like, what are we paying for? What are we doing not paying for? Because I think it's important that if we're going to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on one recruitment tool, we should see in its entirety what we're totally spending. I think that's important. Um, and then, and making sure we know what it is. I appreciate the fact that this is putting certified, certified teachers in that, that if they only have a, not only, but if they have a degree in English, or they have a degree in history, or they have a degree in science, that they are going to now be required to take those classes in teaching, so that we're firming up what we're providing. And I also know that within our district, within each of our schools, we have a very good, robust, um, community that are providing supports to those individual teachers. But the reality is no one else can be there one-on-one with students, except for that one staff. So we do want to make sure that we're putting the best foot for the best person there. Um, so I do thank you, and I will approve this, but I, again, I feel like so many agenda items come to us, that either we don't do it, and then we're going to hurt the kids. I'm sorry. You, the staff, have to do a better job of bringing, of being able to bring something to us, that if we have questions, you have time to correct it. It shouldn't be that it's our responsibility, you know, your urgency isn't my demand. You guys should bring things in a much better timely manner so that we're not feet to the fire. If I don't approve this, I got forty open slots on my shoulders. I don't approve Kelly Services, I got three hundred slots on my shoulders. Where it should be, six months ago, you should have brought it to mine, so I know what I'm doing. And I think that's what we want, to make sure it's very clear, that it's the responsibility of the district to make sure we get things on a timely manner, so our feet are not to the fire. Because what I fear is, once we approve anything, you go out the door and you think you got another year. And I, that's what's happened. Because that's why we're back with Kelly, that's why we're back with everything. It shouldn't be that way. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so we, I mean, we do have national data. I mean, we're building our own data right now. So when Member Rendon asked you how many converted to, to being our employees, that means they are no longer under Teach for America, they are now contracted with us. They are not included in this. Is that what you were saying? You said we had three that converted to our employees?
The three that were hired were our employees from the get-go.
Oh.
They, they received training for up to two years through TFA.
Okay, no, so, so, okay, so they didn't come through Teach for America, those three? No, they were hired by us, they went through training with Teach for America, but they weren't...
No, they came from Teach for America.
No, he just clarified, they did not. We hired them.
Those three employees were recruited by Teach for America.
Okay.
And were placed here. But from the very beginning, the moment they were, uh, employed, they were our employees.
Okay, but what we're saying is, where are they in the pipeline now? What year are they in right now?
They would be in year three, no longer tied, if you will, to, to Teach for America.
So they are now no longer tied to Teach for America, they are with us?
Correct.
Okay, year two are the twenty from last year, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we don't know, they haven't broken free, they haven't broken away from Teach for America yet, because they're bound to them for two years.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have three, the three that came in. So we'll have to now keep track and see how many of the twenty, after the two years, because that's, that's the point where they can, they, they are free of their Teach for America contract and can either stay with us or go on and do something else in their career.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I think you just keep track of that data as we move through this process, so we can continue to, because I'm curious, I told you in our one-on-one, I would support this, and I'm staying true to that. My concern, and I know we need multiple tools in our toolbox to fill these positions, you know, I just don't want to see contracts like this start growing, you know, we're forty, now we're sixteen, now we're a hundred. Because, you know, if the data's not showing that they're converting after two years to stay with us long-term, then this is a Band-Aid solution. That, I understand we need, we need Teach, but I don't want us to start heavily relying on Band-Aids in our toolbox. Um, the majority of tools that we use to fill vacant positions should, um, show us that they are, you know, our employees, our long-term employees, committed to, to the field of education. So that's my concern, when, whether it's Teach for America, or whether it's Kelly Services, or any other outside way that we're recruiting, is, are we seeing a, a, you know, a transfer into becoming our employee? And, and in some cases, we are with Kelly, you brought those numbers tonight. We have not really been long enough with Teach for America to see if those numbers will actually translate long-term into our employees. So, thank you.
Yes, that's true. Um, I think one of the things that's important to share is, um, I, I shared it with all of you, a recruitment plan. For the first time, we actually have an annual recruitment plan that we do. Um, I didn't include these contracts and the numbers in that plan, but going forward, I certainly am okay with including that. So then when you're looking at the recruitment plan of what it includes for the entire year, what our methods are, what we're doing, what our plans are, so you can give direct feedback and what the cost that we anticipate it'll be, we can include that as part of the recruitment plan, so you'll have that information readily available to you. Um, we usually, I turn it out in December, so that way you'll have that information at your charge.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights And the motion passes unanimously. The next item, five oh two, Student Academic Calendar for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, you're familiar with this item, but I do want, before we get started, this is for twenty-six, twenty-seven, so some of your board member comments around getting ahead of things, being where if there are things that needed to be fixed, we have time. So this is for two years from now, this is not from, for August, this is August twenty-six, twenty-seven. And board members, you're familiar with this, of the calendar committee that Ms. Perano runs, so just some highlights of that. Uh, this committee has twenty-three members in attendance, and one online meeting, which was held on May first, twenty-twenty-five. What that committee looks like, some questions early around committees, twelve division representatives, five school-based administrators, nine parents, three PTA TSA representatives, one HCTA officer, one teacher school, uh, school staff, and then one HSEF officer. So there are three models, um, that were presented, had little variation. The committee provided feedback regarding spring break, and their preference for students to be off for both the state fair and the strawberry festival. The committee selected Model C, in which all students will be off for both state fair on February twelfth, twenty-twenty-seven, and strawberry festival on March first, twenty-twenty-seven. Spring break, uh, will be from March twenty-second through March twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, this model received approval from twenty of the twenty-three committee members in attendance on May first, twenty-twenty-five. The proposed calendar, of course, meets the required minutes and credit hours per Florida statute and Florida administrative code. And I just want to thank Ms. Perano, um, I don't think anyone that wants to lead this is one of the more things to lead up when around an academic calendar, what days we're going to be off in winter break, and so I just want to thank Ms. Perano publicly for all her work, uh, and to bring us this so far ahead of time. Here we are, this is going into next school year, and this is for twenty-six, twenty-seven. So thank you, Ms. Perano, and that is item five oh two.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C five oh two. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Rendon. Member Gray, you pulled this item, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, thank you.
Um, okay, I, uh, Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one question. The one thing that we don't have listed here is if we do have another potent, like potential hurricane times, do we want to put on here that that would affect our early release days? It is not listed on here.
Yes, uh, thank you, Ms. Rendon. We can definitely add that. Currently, with Model C that we have, there are forty-eight hundred minutes, or four thousand eight hundred minutes beyond what the state statute requires. So we do have some natural hurricane days built in there. If for some reason we do exhaust those days, then obviously we would work with the union and potentially look at some early release days, or adding additional day, instructional minutes to our existing instruct, instructional days, I'm sorry. Um, but yes, right now, we do have forty-eight hundred minutes that are built in, that's above and beyond the state statute requirements.
Does that include the October ninth, November eleventh? Does that include those dates?
Yes, those dates are included.
So that we would have to lose those days and not lose the early release? Because I do know that, although I felt like we did a really good job of minimizing disruption to families, um, with this, you know, ten days, I believe we're over ten days, eleven days to make up, I, I just want to make sure parents know the options that are out there. And I do know that our teachers, um, very much, even though it's a very short amount of time on Mondays, it really meets into their preparation, their planning time. Um, and it, they felt very much rushed in having to do extra work after hours. So, um, I just want to make sure that we properly prepare that as an, if that's going to be an option, let's make sure we make sure they are aware of it.
Yes, we will add that.
Wrong one. Thank you, Member Rendon. Um, I do see here, it says, early release day schedule has not been finalized. How does that tie into Member Rendon's question?
Right now, the proposed schedule does include, uh, those early release minutes, uh, even though we have not negotiated that with the union yet. Uh, this is two years out, so as we get closer to the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar year, we will have union negotiations. But those minutes have been included in this proposed schedule.
So the reason you have the sentence, it has not been finalized, is just to cover in case negotiations change this by some, some way?
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay, and I just appreciate you, I know it's two years out, but I appreciate Superintendent Ayers, you highlighting that spring break is going to be much later on that calendar year than it is all the other years. Um, so I hope that we get in front of parents and let them know that as well, because it's been kind of the same week for so long. So this change will catch people by surprise. So I appreciate you pulling it, Member Gray. It's always good to have this kind of out in the public, so that people can make plans if they plan two years out. Um, seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote, of the vote when your lights appear, push the wrong button. And the motion passes with Member Gray being away from the dais. We're going to move on to six oh one, Budget Amendments for the period ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Jamie Lewis will highlight this item.
All right, good evening, board members. Thank you for this opportunity that the finance team can give you an update. Uh, well, tonight, we'll be updating you on two months of activity, and that is both our April and our May activity, uh, just from a timing standpoint. And so we wanted to highlight first, um, our adopted budget. We always want to start there where we began the year. And coming all the way back to the fall, just to remember that we started the, uh, year and the budget that was approved at a two-hundred-and-eighty-three-million-dollar ending fund balance, and that's going to be something that's important for us as we move forward, understanding where our fund balance is and how we manage that. And as a reminder, that was at a fifteen-point-five percent, um, fund balance. And so that's one thing that we're continuing to monitor. And as we consider the changes for April and May, as we discussed in our one-on-ones, there was minimum, minimum changes for both of those, uh, months. Uh, if you remember back, the, the big change that we had in recent months was back in March, and calculation three came in. Uh, one of the reasons we haven't seen much change in our budget is because calculation four, that usually is here around late April, early May, we have not yet received that yet from the state of Florida. And so that is still pending. Uh, we were at a finance conference last week and, and talking with other CFOs, that is pending across the state. And so that is something that we're going to keep in our eyes on, um, and we'll discuss that more in just a few minutes. We wanted to bring your attention that, um, as you remember, a two-hundred-and-eighty-three million dollar fund balance was approved at the beginning of the year for the adopted budget. Um, we now project that to be two-hundred-and-sixty-six million, which is what we projected in March. And again, that change is primarily due to some of the impacts we discussed at earlier board meetings, uh, from the March, uh, update and calculation three. For May thirty-first, as, as similar as we just said, we're trending, uh, in a lot of good ways. So you remember, we had some challenges earlier this year with some of our collections, and that was related to the hurricane. As mentioned before, we've, we've completely caught up with that. Our total revenue collected right now is at eighty-nine percent, which is about where our average is, and then our expenditures are white, where we are usually. And so we're continuing to monitor that. Obviously, calculation four could impact us, and that's something we have to brace for, and we are. And so we're waiting for that to understand how that might impact us, of course, this late in the fiscal year. Uh, we won't have much time to maneuver, and so as soon as we get that, we'll be, uh, updating the board, um, with the impact for that. Public, thank you. One thing that the finance team will do and continue to do is revise how we present the budget to you. We're trying to make this a more easier format, that's one of our goals for next year, so hopefully you'll be seeing some changes, uh, soon after we get through the fiscal year. Uh, but one of the things that we want to bring our attention to is the constant, uh, feedback and look that we have on our general fund balance. And so this chart, as we have for the last, uh, several updates, uh, provides you a snapshot of just kind of the, the even flow that we go through throughout the year for our fund balance. Um, and, and what, why this is important, we want to continue to see that, is because we have our highs and lows during the year. Um, next year will also include that, as we, as we add additional, uh, income from the referendum, and we talked about that at a later date, but that will obviously impact things. But as you can see, um, a high fund balance in the summertime allows us to manage through the year. Um, there is, if we didn't have that high fund balance in the, the district, would have potentially a challenge with cash flow. We do not have that, and that's one thing I want to stress, that we're in good shape right now because of our fund balance, and that's something that we'll continue to monitor as we, as we move forward. And finally, we, what we wanted to summarize was, is, is what we're seeing and what we're thinking, uh, from the finance team. As we mentioned earlier, April and May was mostly the same as anticipated. Again, in normal years or previous years, I'm being told, as this is my first summer with the district, uh, we would know a lot more at this time of the season than we know right now. So again, we're just being patient and waiting on that. As mentioned earlier, we're pending Calc Four, that will have a, a potential impact for this year. And as you're all aware, the budget has been, uh, sent to the governor's office, and so we're waiting for feedback from there. Hopefully, this week, we will know a little more direction about what's happening for next year. With that being said, that is our finance update for this evening.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve item C six oh one. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Rendon. Member Gray and Member Combs, you pulled this item, do you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, uh, Mr. Lewis, Susan Garcia. You've done a great job in simplifying, I know the work is not done, but simplifying all the numbers, uh, help, is so helpful. You know, uh, and this is a quote from you, Mr. Lewis, that our Hillsborough County Public School District will look a lot different next year. And, and that is the truth. So one of the, um, stabilizing features, which you brought out very keenly, is the fund balance, a healthy fund balance. Because when you get into hiccups like, well, we got the hurricanes, and that's enough right there, but when the FTE starts showing a decrease, as it did in the third quarter, probably because of the Family Empowerment Scholarships of eighteen million, then it's a good thing we do have something to bounce back, because we're going to need that comfort level for maybe another year, maybe two years. So I'm all for that healthy fund balance, which really leads us to say that our policy, six-two-one-oh, financial planning, we have to update that to be relevant to the higher fund balance. So I think we're definitely, and you know, I wanted that workshop, uh, I gave it to you on our financial planning, and so you can see why that when we have policy language that's not relevant, that has to be included in that workshop, but we'll get to that in a minute. The, the idea that the Florida, uh, F, Florida Empowerment Scholarship, with an outreach of possibly twenty-four thousand families, when we look at that fourth calculation, we're looking at a tremendous deficit of FTE, and I know you're preparing for that, and I wish, and you wish, we could have more succinct numbers, because we just got the budget okayed, and, and I know Kristin knows that there's vetoes going on shortly, uh, line item vetoes that will affect that too. So, healthy fund balance, but, and the challenges of the Florida Empowerment Scholarships are real, and they're, they're large in numbers. But Mr. Farkas, the other challenge that we're learning about, and I know you're going to go over it with the school board members, is the co-share, and let me get the name of it right. It's the co-locate, where the charter schools can basically take some of our almost-empty schools, partially empty, move in without having to pay, and basically inhabit and use our school, public schools. And there's no, you know, there's no financial leverage that we can do. So that's going to be a big reality. And before I say anything more on it, Mr. Farkas, perhaps you want to expand a little bit so board members can see or hear what ramifications and what we perhaps better do soon.
Well, and Ms. Davis, who's actively involved in a conversation with Superintendent, actually keeps us up to date with what we have. And so there's a bill introduced that talked about co-location. And it did not pass this time. It was one that didn't get a lot of legs on it. But as many of you know, seasoned board members, a lot of times, it gets introduced one year, comes back the next year with a little bit more support. So it is something we are watching very closely. And thank you again to Ms. Davis for keeping us right in the loop and following that. Same with our local and state lobbyists to understand the ramifications. Because the way it was written originally, Ms. Gray, was that any open rooms we have, that they could take over, whether that's one room, or 10 rooms, or anything else. And we could not lease anything out to our properties as of right now. Again, did not pass this session, is not there. But as this board knows, sometimes that gets reintroduced the next session.
Yes, so I will just piggyback on that real quick. So what, last night, one of the amendments, that was like essentially it's a strike-all amendment. So it's the, there's a conforming to the budget, a conforming bill to the budget, and also an implementing bill to the budget. And the, I think it's the implementing bill to the budget, no, it's the conforming, includes language on co-location, but it's related to Schools of Hope specifically. So that's what we're working on. And actually, Danielle Shotwell and I were just talking about it a little bit ago. And Angela, it's been on her radar as well in charters. And it'll be part of the legislative session review workshop on July 22nd.
And you know, you can't blame that part of the equation, because here we are with empty buildings. Why wouldn't we, you know, why wouldn't another entity want to come in and have that space? So, you know, and our Achilles' heel, as Superintendent Van Ayers is very aware of, we have empty schools. And we're using a lot of resources to continue, and that's a big deficit. So go ahead, Kristin.
I was just going to also add that we do anticipate this coming back next session. And one of the things which we'll have to work on together is the language, is what they're using to measure it is our enrollment, which is K through 12. But they're not taking into account VPK, the spaces. They're not taking into account adult, things that are going under in the day. So that's where they, VPK, we kind of got our arms around that. And they, I think they got them to understand that. But the adult, not yet, and other things, like some districts, the sites use have for childcare, or even like Pasco, what they use for the health centers. So that's not reflected in what the DOE is using.
Yeah, and you know Danielle from the Florida School Board Association, yourself, Danielle Shotwell, we're very aware that there's moving parts going on within this conversation. And to the wonderful work that you're doing, Mr. Lewis, you're also planning. So when we talk about changing policies, I'm kind of flipping the subject, you know, making our policy more relevant, I would rather go the path originally, as I shared with you, a financial plan. Because within that financial plan, the board members need to have the input and share upon the realities of what is going to occur after the fourth quarter and after the veto, or non-veto, of Governor DeSantis. So I would recommend that you and I, again, go back to the drawing board, put together the workshop, and in that space, discuss policy updates and relevance. And I don't know where Mr. Porter is. I was going to ask him for his feedback. But that's where I think is the most common sense route. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. And just a reminder to myself, any workshop requests, please put those through. Through our board secretaries for any workshop requests. I will put mine through for the Cali services. The next inquiry is Dr. Han, but I know. Dr. Han?
Go ahead of me.
Are you sure?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So yeah, I wanted to, I'm glad that, thank you, Member Gray, for bringing up policy, especially on the fund balance. I wanted to talk about this, because it was not at the last meeting. I was told that the policy that I had kind of shepherded through the system was not supposed to come to that meeting. And then I had a bit of a health crisis and couldn't make the meeting on Tuesday, and didn't have, I didn't feel like I had to physically push myself because I was told that it would not be brought for a vote. And so obviously, you can imagine my disappointment when I saw that it was brought for a vote. But funny enough, you know, we had talked about that fund balance policy at a workshop. We came to a consensus around 8%. The teachers' union put a letter out, sent it to all board members, discouraging the support of an 8% fund balance. So when it came to the board, it was shot down by the majority of the board, I would imagine rather influenced by that letter. Funny enough, the way the policy is written, we are now at a 16% fund balance. I don't know if the union realized that. I don't know if board members realized that. But you shot down an 8% fund balance to stick with the 16% fund balance requirement. So I'm going to, I'm working, I'm going to rework the policy to try and then bring it back to workshop, to try and get some consensus around this. Otherwise, now, now we're sitting at 16%. So that's where we're at right now, just so everybody knows. We would have been at 8%. And I would have talked about this at the last board meeting had I been here and had I thought the policy was coming. So sorry, I couldn't talk about it at that meeting. I'm sorry, I couldn't be here at that meeting. I know it was an important meeting, but like I mentioned, I did have a health crisis that I was only able to call Mr. Porter about 3:15 that afternoon. But we can, you know, have, we'll hopefully have future discussions around that, and we can talk further and really dive into that policy around fund balance. And as far as the empty buildings, you know, I know that we have schools that have people in them, working. I think there's some really creative ways that we can use our buildings, if not for traditional schools. I know we've talked about this before, about maybe early childhood centers that would be a win-win, because employees could use those early. Childcare is very expensive, early childhood, you know, and preschools and so forth. You know, maybe there could be a sliding scale for our employees, free to our students who have young children, and also used for career and tech ed purposes to train future, you know, preschool teachers and so forth. So I think there's a lot of really good conversations, and I'm sure my colleagues have amazing ideas on how to utilize these buildings, because we're all pretty creative people, and understand the importance of retaining our buildings. So I just wanted to put that out there, since it came up during this agenda item in this conversation. But I do want to revisit that fund balance policy. You know, so I'll put in another workshop request for that, so we can, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Han. Member Combs?
Yeah, I just wanted to really pull this item, just because it was the, just looking at the budget amendments and what's happening. And I did want to thank you, Mr. Lewis. I can see that you're thinking outside the box, which is really important. You know, the way I look at it, when I look at, you know, our number one job is to make sure our students are safe and they get an education. But we are a $4.2 billion corporation, which is with a lot of assets and funding and properties. And we have to be really smart. We have to look at things on a really business perspective as well, and see how we can make more money. If we're not going to get money from the state of Florida, you know, if we're going to continue to be undercut, we have to think about every contract, doing RFPs, saving every money. But also, when I look at this growth and management, you know, we, there are schools that we are looking at, that we still have to look at. But we also have to look at future schools. There are schools that we are still sitting at. You know, I went to a school the other day, and the number of students that were there, we just cannot keep schools open with that low enrollment. And we have to think outside the box. Do we have to do long-term leases until things change? Because the communities are changing, they are building up. But also, birth rates are down, right? People aren't having children. It's more expensive to live in the city. We need to really look at those properties. And I've been saying this, you know, Mr. Farkas, you know, for about two or three years now, I've said, let's do long-term lease. Let's start being very aggressive about this. Because if we don't do something now, the choices aren't going to be left to us. The decisions are going to be made for us. So we need to be very assertive and look at these buildings, and really look at what we're going to do with them in the future. I mean, selling them is not an option. It should always be leased. When our payroll is 60 million every two weeks, there's no reason you're going to sell a building. But really looking at that affordable housing. When we look at the contracts and how we're losing people, we need to start thinking outside the box of how things are going to be very different in education. And you also have to think five years from now, the average child is not going to be going to school at 8:00 in the morning and leaving at school at 4:00. AI is going to change a lot of things. We need to start thinking outside the box, being innovative, maybe having a school that's supporting homeschool students. And we can charge for that. We need to really start looking at our Hillsborough County Public Schools as a real corporation, and how we can make money. Because if we're not going to make, get money from the state, then we need to know how we can make money from the assets that we have here in Hillsborough County.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Member Combs. Yeah, we've been saying out of the box, but Superintendent Van Ayers, we have to think innovatively. Let's get the adverb there. Because when we talk about selling or leasing, that's fine. But what I really think is the highlight is the multipurpose. So example, and this came from Mr. Lewis, the ISC building, Velasco, sorry, Chris, we can put all that into one of our emptier school board, school buildings. You know, because at the end of the day, if your FTE is subtracting very aggressively, then we have to be aggressive. Yet, to the point of, Member Combs, we need to be innovative and have the desirable types of multipurpose or multi-use schools, so we can lure those children in. I mean, the fine example was the Montessori at Esri. I think that drew a lot, it does, it draws a lot of folks, and it has a waiting list. So what do you say to that? Talk to me and talk to us about innovation.
It's an important discussion. And that's why we had the workshop scheduled. We tried to get it pushed and just kept getting pushed around growth management. So these same conversations, I need, the staff needs direction on where we want to go. Because we can do a million different things, options, with choices with schools, what we want to do with buildings. So I look forward to next week at this time, where we can sit up in a workshop and talk through that, because we need some direction on where this board wants to go. Because these are hot topics that get a lot of people's attention when you talk about, you know, buildings and what you're going to do with them. So we just, you know, there's a lot of things we can do. But I want to make sure we have consensus among the board. And I look forward, I just want to make sure that by, excuse me, by next Tuesday, that the board, myself, staff will be ready to go, that we have some extensive discussion around this particular topic, so we can, staff and Chris's team can hit the ground running. Mr. Farkas?
You said it perfectly. We also have some third-party vendors that'll come out and do analysis. I know that we, market rate and things like that, and comparables, you've heard Miss Rendon reference that numerous times. We want to make sure that we're having people that are in the market right now that are talking about it, that can give you live data, real-life data of what's going on. And you can give us a little direction. So you're exactly right, Mr. Ayers, is that we want to make sure that we've got a consensus from the board of next steps. Because we're going to talk about repurpose of buildings. But there's another aspect of that, and I've talked to a few different board members about it, about what it looks like to lease buildings. We've got a lot of different nonprofits. We've got a lot of different groups that are leasing from other places that can be a community assets to us. So Mr. Ayers has already given us that direction. So we look forward to bringing those to the board in the very near future, some community partners that are paying rent other places, that can pay rent and support our schools and support our kids. But I think it's going to be a positive thing to fill up. So we look forward to bringing those to the board as well.
So what I'm hearing, and this is to Member Han's point, too, have the whiteboards or the Post-it. Let us give you ideas for the repurposing, because that's a fun activity. But we have background, some of us are countywide and have been on the board for a while. We can give very solid ideas. Some of us have taught in different school models. So I think, I look forward to it as well, as a creative type. Don't, you know, board members, we don't need to give every, all the work to you, because we can, we can also reinvent. We can also think outside every box. The other point I wanted to say is, yes, leasing is critical, because while we can be all fancy and have dynamic, eclectic type of alternate learning sites, we also have to have a revenue source, a continual one. So to Member Combs' point, leasing is very, very critical. So I think both ends of the spectrum are favorable. Selling, you know, perhaps the last resort. But anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. So one, I just kind of want to respond to Dr. Han, that I think it was unfortunately, the way that went down. I was very clear weeks before that, that I wanted those policies separated. And I had asked all the people coordinating on that to do that beforehand, so that would be very clear. So I'm sorry that you didn't know that was going to be the case. I was very transparent about that. I've been pretty transparent about where I stand on it from the beginning. So, you know, obviously, you don't need to request a workshop. We have a policy cycle. I'm sure you'll bring that up in another policy cycle. But just going forward, I did make a point to everyone who helps with those hearings to be very clear that if there is a request to separate that, that's very transparent. And we have a much stronger process in voting on it, because it was kind of chaotic. And I, and I also did ask if we wanted to wait until you came back to vote on that specifically. And we were told to go ahead, and if you wanted to bring that back, you could. So I just wanted to be clear about that. So to talk about the budget specifically, one, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for just your transparency, your partnership. It is so refreshing, I think I say this every time we talk about the budget, to be able to ask you questions, to get honest answers, to feel like I understand, you know, what we're talking about. I also thank you for your constant transparency around the fact that we just continually have delays in our third and our fourth quarters. And when we talk about a budget plan, that I understand why Member Gray has urgency in that. Or when we hear our legislators constantly talk about Hillsborough County staying within our budget, the fact that there's no accountability to give us our quarter reports on time so that we can build out a budget. I mean, when we're talking about a delay from legislation that lasts weeks to even finalize a budget, and then from the state, a delay for how long with no answers of where it's going to be and no accountability, building out a budget and navigating financial stressful times is almost impossible, and it feels very irresponsible, and it makes it feel like we're set up to fail. So thank you for always being transparent on the fact that we continue to ask for our counts, so we can budget. I mean, when we get, you know, what was it, 18, 9 million, 12 million just taken out of our budget, and then we don't know what our quarter reports are going to be, it's extremely filled with anxiety. And, you know, as a board member to make these decisions, not even understanding what our revenue, what our main source of revenue is going to be. So I appreciate that. The only other thing that I really want to mention, and I know we talked about this, and I wanted to bring it up to your attention, Superintendent, because you weren't in our agenda meeting, is when we go through the departments, and it kind of points out how much revenue has come in compared to how much that department has spent of their revenue, there are several departments that are over 100% and have overspent their budget. And when I've asked on clarity around what that looks like when departments overspend and where that comes out of, I didn't get a lot of clarity on that. So I know that the attempt is to put systems and processes in place around that. But the fact that we're here, and I don't have clear answers to that, is problematic to me. So I just want to point that out so that we can address that.
Okay, I'll need to get some more information on that. And Mr. Lewis, can you?
Yes, we'll be following up on that.
Okay. Let me be clear, though. So we're talking about the departmental, because what I'm hearing, I just want to make sure that, it sounds like we're overspending, when I don't think we are.
There's really two or three different things that occur. Is one, is departmental transfers. And so sometimes that, things hit the general fund, and they are going to be transferred into another bucket for whatever appropriate reason that's already been approved. It's just in the wrong bucket. And so there's a timing issue for that. I think the other one, the second problem, is a timing issue just in general. And so sometimes we'll naturally overspend before everything catches itself up. And so you think about it, the best budget in the world is spread out evenly over 12 months. That doesn't really happen naturally. And so sometimes we'll be higher on some months year-to-date versus where we would be on an annual basis. And so we're going to, we'll provide clarity on that one, too.
But just to be clear, when I asked at the end of the year if there are still deficiencies in their departments that have gone over budget, and what the accountability and level looks like for that, I was told it just comes out of the general fund, and that's the way it works.
Yes.
I'm just going to be clear, and that's what I was told.
And to clarify, that is one thing in process, as we mentioned, is going to be changing from an accountability standpoint, from a monthly engagement standpoint between the finance team in each department, and also from a planning standpoint. So we believe we can put processes in place. we can put processes in place now that our team is here to ensure more accountability and transparency.
And I just bring that up because I appreciate that, and I want to make sure that our new CFO is supported in that, and that there's not pushback when it comes to that. So, thank you. I don't have any other questions. If there are any other questions, Combs, no, seeing none, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. The next one is 706, guaranteed maximum price for the electric vehicle charging project at Lewis Avenue. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is the GMP for electric vehicle charging project at Lewis Avenue. The board item requires approval of the GMP for the electric vehicle charging station facility at Lewis Avenue. We propose to create a charging area on our Lewis Avenue complex. This was the need due to having the ability to charge electric vehicles on the west side of the county. This issue will be resolved by adding charging stations for up to eight electric vehicles, and that is 706, GMP for electric vehicle charging on Lewis.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C 706. I have a motion by Member Perez and a second by Member Rendon. Member Rendon and Dr. Han pulled this item. Do you have a question or comment?
Mr. Farkas, is the 1.3 here the total cost of infrastructure for these electric buses? Or is this, what is, is this just one station and there are others?
Great question. So, this is the second station. We have the one at King High School that we already, that was covered by the, much of it covered by the grant.
Right.
This one is Lois. And if you look in the, in the actual item, the contract item, the actual charging units are about $270,000, and there's about $70,000 worth of electric. So, it's really about $340,000 that's the electric charging stations. The rest of it's the improvement that were needed at Lois. They've had flooding issues there. It's pavement, you'll see it listed as site work, which means that we're grading, and we're doing that part of it, too. There's about 600, well, not about, $657,000 that is site work to make sure that that place is a place to actually have.
A station.
Yes, exactly.
It had to be done for this purpose.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure we differentiated that it's not all stations.
Did we know we were going to add this one when we put the electric buses? Was this added after the King?
This is the second one. So, if we got, remember, we got two electric bus grants. We got two different 40.
Okay. So, this is the second one. King was from the first grant. This is for the second.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. And the first grant pretty much covered the station. This one did not.
That is correct.
Okay. So, that came out of your fund operations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, we talked a little bit about last time, the recall on the Bluebird electric buses, and you weren't sure if that was going to impact us. Can you give an update on that?
Yes, ma'am. The recall that we talked about, I think it was about a month or two ago, did not impact us. That was not part of our recall. But the, since then, we've had another recall. That's that part of it, too. So, we've sent all of our Bluebird buses in to get assessed, to make sure that we met that. That's, they're in the process of that right now. So, they had to assess each one, the batteries on those buses that they had some issues with.
Caught on fire?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, if for some reason those buses are not, you know, able to come back to us anytime soon, is there, I would imagine, like on most of our contracts, some type of out clause where we can get out of purchasing those buses and instead purchase the Thomas buses that the staff and superintendent originally brought to this board?
It's a great question and one that I hadn't been asked. I've been in this job for a while, so I got an opportunity to do some research. So, I always appreciate getting pushed in that, in that way. As the board knows, the bus purchasing is very different from anything else we do. The state of Florida is the one that actually does the contract, does the negotiations. We have to buy from the state of Florida to do that. There is not a normal, I wouldn't say normal, the traditional contract that we've done with the 30-day out and the recall and things like that. So, there is not a path that I have found to get us out of that purchase, if that makes sense, if that was the board's will.
And we're just stuck with those buses?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, if the board's will is to go out of it, we'd be happy to get legal involved with it. But just for the normal contract, I just want to make sure this isn't our RFP or our contract. It's the state's contract. It's a little bit different.
Yeah. Your staff didn't want those buses.
The recommendation was for the Thomas. Yes, ma'am.
Right. Have you sent any, or what is your plan? Because there was a discrepancy in the safety features of those two buses. And I asked you this when we were voting on it, how you were going to let parents know that their child was riding on an electric bus that was not up to the same safety standards as the other electric buses.
Did we have any?
We didn't. Actually, we put them on the road and got them going in April, and we got the recall right after that. So, the Thomas buses are the ones that have been, I'll verify that, but that's my understanding, the Thomas buses. I'm going to misspeak to the board.
I would imagine legally, it might be a good idea to just let parents know that their children are riding on buses that have different safety equipment and might catch on fire. So, okay. Good choice. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Han. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we clarify how many buses from what we originally ordered, which I believe were 19? How many did we originally order?
We have two grants for 20. It was two IC buses, the long-term buses, and then we had nine Thomas buses and nine of the Bluebird buses. And the second order was identical to the first one.
Okay. So, of the 40 buses, how many did we receive from each? From Thomas and from Bluebird?
18 Thomas, 18 Bluebird, and four IC. The ICs, last time I checked, and this was probably two weeks ago, the ICs had not come in. They were a little bit delayed on the, those, the long-range ones that we had ordered, those had not come in as of last time I checked.
But the other, the other ones have?
Yes.
The other, what is that, 36?
There may be a couple that were waiting, but both orders have started to come in. Yes, that's correct.
And so, you're telling me all 18 of the Bluebird buses are not, and aren't we, they've all been sent back? Or were they a visual recall that needed to be just a visual recall? They were not fully sent back to the manufacturer?
The second time, we actually said, you tell us if these are the ones that are recalled. We didn't want that to be on us. We sent them to Bluebird and said, hey, how many of these actually need to be recalled so they could verify the case? I do not believe it was all the buses that are, that actually had to be recalled and the batteries had to be changed out. But we're still waiting on that report. We have not finished that process.
So, right, and how many buses actually went on the road?
So, it was only the first round. By the, we didn't get the second round of buses until after it was the end of the year. So, we started the electric buses for about a month, and it was nine buses that went on the road.
So, nine total buses went on the road, only with Thomas?
That's correct.
Okay. What was the first recall? Because I'm only aware of the one recall with the batteries, and that, my understanding was, none of our, none of our VIN numbers, none of the VIN number, I won't say VIN number, but the numbers of the batteries matched the recalls.
You're 100% correct. That was the first one that we had heard. There was a couple articles in media about the recalls. Ours did not match that. It was when ours were made after that, that run.
Yes.
There was a secondary recall.
Correct.
That came after that, and we did have some that were during, during that run.
They were during the run, but they did not match the numbers, I thought.
Some of them did, and some of them didn't. And I don't want to misspeak to the board. I'm not trying to mislead you. We basically said to Bluebird, verify all of them. You tell us which ones need to be done to make sure that we've got safe buses on the road. So, my understanding is that both of them, that there were some that were in that. But I'm not speaking from a place of authority. We have not gotten that report back from Bluebird.
Okay. Because it's the battery pack that, it's actually the, like, screws of the battery that would release the protective thing on them, not necessarily the battery. And then when it would be exposed to the elements is when the battery would then, again, catch on fire, which is what Dr. Han is saying. So, I'm going to go back to the fact that how most of these, part of our grant that we received is from our urban areas and our urban core that are going to be utilizing these. I remind you, one of my biggest concerns, no matter whether it's Bluebird or Thomas, was these are going to be used in highly flooded areas of Florida and here in Tampa Bay, and that, that is just not a reliable source with this minor protection. So, again, this was not actually the battery. It was actually the screws that actually attached to the protective coating of the battery, which, again, it's a much more complex thing. So, and I do want to make sure before we start the school year, that we do make sure we compare the safety standards on the two buses, because I do know that the state law requires when you're going to change the safety features, it takes about a year to do that. And we're about a year in, which I believe now both of them have similar safety features. So, I think we need to make sure the board is aware, our families are aware, they have a choice. Because the last time you said we're going to have a bus following the electric bus, it sounds very confusing. I mean, when we approved the first one, everything was going to be paid for, the station, everything. Now, I do remind you, that doesn't include the cost of electricity to us, and we've yet to know what that looks like.
Correct. And as I told the board, we got the more expensive charging stations that could run all of the information, all the data that'll come off of it. How long did it charge? How far did it go? So that we can report back to the board with both, all three of the different vendors. This is how much it goes. This is how much it costs per mile for electricity. This is the best bet. In addition to all the safety stuff, just from electricity and miles that it goes. And again, there was some discrepancy on how far they went. That is also something that we can track from a battery standpoint. So, that, we will have all that data for you. We only have limited data because we only ran them for three or four weeks. We, I'm a fan of running pilots in the spring, so you can kind of work out some of the bugs before we run them in the fall.
Well, and I'll be honest with you. I'm not going to approve this item because now we're adding on us. If you would have told me that this was purposely done to improve a Lois station for all of our buses, and that's the case, but just to be doing it for the one where we don't have a really active working system that we know our health and safety of our students are in jeopardy, that I'm not going to approve this right now, because I need clear-cut evidence that if I put a student in any vehicle, that I know the safety, and I don't think we can all feel that way right now. So...
And that's fair, and obviously, that's, respect that decision. I want to make sure that we have both diesel and electric that are in the same place in the Lois Avenue. It's over by the airport. We have, it's where our Maintenance West is. So, all the buses will benefit from the $600,000 in site work. It'll be paved and that part of it, too. But to answer your question, this was happened because of the electric, and what you said was accurate.
So, how many buses are going to be at each location?
Of the electric buses, there's going to be 20 at each location.
And then are we building another station?
No, because that's 40 is what we have. We have 40 buses that are the two grants of 20. That's it.
Okay. Again, in the climate we're in, financial resources we're in, we're looking at increase of electricity, we're spending 1.3 million dollars, where I know that that capital millage could go into my ESC centers to make sure that I'm benefiting the health and safety of students. Right now, where I could be putting health and safety of students in jeopardy, when I know I've got staff that are being beaten, I don't have good structure in any of those, many of those schools. They need to be redone. They need to be updated. I can't, in good conscience, when I have another bus that can take them somewhere, that I can't put 1.3 million into those schools, that I know I've got to have students, which are most vulnerable students, and our most vulnerable staff protected better. So, I cannot approve this right now.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Combs?
Thank you. Mr. Farkas, I mean, if this doesn't get approved, I mean, what do you have, electric buses, but without any place to power them? Or what does that look like?
Yeah. So, we'll have to back them up at King. So, we won't have enough charging stations to meet the number of buses. That's correct.
I mean, and how much was the value of the 40 electric buses?
It was expensive. They were $400,000, $425,000 apiece.
Okay.
So, roughly eight and a half, nine million dollars.
Okay. So, you know, looking at using, and in general, the cost savings for the gasoline has got to be probably about 75%?
I would be guessing on that part, too. That's what the manufacturers definitely pushed for that to be there. We look forward to comparing our data to that part, too. But remember, the buses were all grant-funded. So, even though it was eight, nine million dollars, it was the grant paid for those.
Yeah. And if a bus was going to catch fire or, you know, going to be dangerous, would we not know about it? I mean, would that not be very clear? We wouldn't have our buses out there.
Correct. And if there's, if that would happen, that would be a recall or something like that, that they would, they would be responsible for fixing, just like in your own car.
Yeah. I mean, I think this, this kind of like, giving this idea out, this idea coming out is not true. And also, remember, board members, it was a strong six to one vote that we decided to do that. And I know for me personally, I really wanted to measure the different buses and see how they're doing. Like, and so, this is the first marker already, like, which bus company is already out and going, right? Thomas has already got their buses out. We're still waiting for that. And so, what's, what's the timeline? What I'd like to do is like, for every, every one of these, or maybe I can email you some things that I'm looking for, like, when did the first bus come out? What was the delay? That way, we can continue documenting all of this. So, that way, at the end of the day, we can look and say, obviously, this company is better, or this company isn't better, you know, what it looks like for cost savings, what it looks like for the number of students, the bus experience, the bus driver, what the students are feeling like, all of that. I think that's really important. I think the main reason, you know, a school, you know, that we voted six to one to look at that is because there's, there's two, this is, this is up and coming, electric buses, and we want to make sure that we have the best buses and that we don't just choose one bus and just stick with it. So, I want to remind, you know, all the members why we did this in the first place anyways.
So, I'd love the feedback from the board. I can tell you what we look at, which is going to be, we do a driver survey to make sure that they're there. We look at time off the road. Do they have a maintenance request? Do they have something in that part of it, too? We look at the cost per mileage and what it costs to charge and time off of that, too. So, if there's other items that the board members want us to look at, we most assuredly would love to hear that feedback, and we'll include that as part of the package. The transportation staff is done, knows fully, knows full well that this is an expectation, that the board has a report on how the buses do, how they're charged, all that kind of stuff, too. You'll definitely see that.
Replacement, what the replacement looks, like, how long.
Right. How long, if it's a warranty item, how long they're out of service.
How long it takes for them to respond back to us, you know? I mean, I think already that the idea that we're, we're still, we have some buses out and some buses not out, you can already see there's, you're seeing a difference, right? So, let's just see which is a superior bus and which isn't, once we get going. But I don't think we're going to know until a full year in, I would think, a full school year, until we can really evaluate that.
We'll be able to give quarterly reports. But yeah, it's like anything else, like a car, when you first get it and, you know.
Right. Because it might, because it might look really great the first six months, and then afterwards, it's not.
It's a lot of money we spend on the buses. So, we're going to be, we're going to have them for a while. So, you're going to get that data as long as we have them.
And do you have any idea the amount of cost savings when you're looking at 1.3 million? I mean, I mean, I have no idea how much you spend on gasoline, right, with all these buses all over. I mean, I would think it's a huge amount.
Last year, I think we spent 6.8 million just on gas alone for buses. So, it's a large amount. But it's also what else it takes to repair, and if they're under warranty, things like that. So, we, we, the expectation from myself and my team is that we give the board all of that information. You guys have all that at your fingertips.
Yeah. And I mean, and Laura Hill is just top-notch, amazing.
Glad you brought her name up. She was actually just put up as president-elect for the FAPT, the Florida Association of People Transportation. So, she is now our president-elect for that group for the state. So, yeah, she is.
I'm not surprised at all.
Yep.
So, she's amazing. We have so many great people. So, I know that she'll be very responsive and keep, continue looking at this. But thank you, and I am going to support it, because I want to make sure that we're as efficient as possible to make sure that this is going to work. I mean, what am I going to have, the bus, if I can't have the battery, and I got to go as far away to get it? Does, doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. I appreciate you kind of bringing that up, and I do appreciate Dr. Hans consistent pointing out which bus has been a better bus. But I will say quite transparently, the superintendent and staff capitulated on which bus to recommend down to, down to the last minute. It's not like when I talked to staff or whatnot, there was a clear winner all along. And I do appreciate Member Combs bringing up the point that that was kind of what it was, you know? There were a lot of different stats on paper, but until we have them and we're able to see them and we're able to learn about this, it's hard to make those decisions. I knew honestly, from when we had our press conference and I walked in the buses, again, I reiterate, I wish we could have seen them, because to Dr. Han's point, I think that just visually, the Thomas ones were a better design. And that's the point of kind of being a board, is, you know, we're trying to make the best decisions. We followed a previous board in a bus when they decided to kind of split it and figure out which one was best. And I hope that, you know, we're learning important lessons from this. So, I appreciate that.
And I think it's important that we do provide that information to you, because as much as things go on early, it may be six months from now, we see that the other, that Bluebird is doing 10 times better than Thomas. So, I mean, we don't, we just want to give real data and let the board make that decision.
But we don't want our students to blow up, that's for sure.
That is probably a bad idea, yes. I don't think Mr. Porter would like that.
All right. Seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes with Member Rendon and Dr. Han voting no. All right, we are on to our last agenda item, 1001, EduPoint Final Software License for Synergy Student System Information Systems. Superintendent Ayers, no, I'm not. We're on a different one.
You need to do 7-Eleven, the piggyback agreement.
Oh, sorry. Jumped ahead of myself. Got excited there. All right. Just kidding. We are nowhere near our last agenda item. Let me back up. We have another one coming. That is 7-Eleven, approved piggyback agreement between Everdriven Technologies LLC for Alternative Student Transportation. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as you mentioned, this is Everdriven, the piggyback for alternative student transportation. The district requires specialized transportation services for several student populations, including McKinney-Vento students, ESE special needs students, out-of-district placements, hard-to-serve routes, and multi-district trips. Everdriven Technology supports these needs by providing transportation using a variety of vehicles, including SUVs, minivans, wheelchair-accessible vans, and sedans. Partnering with Everdriven Technology enables the district to reliably and efficiently meet complex transportation demands. And this board has previously approved service by Everdriven Technology, and this year's cost is not expected to increase, and that is 7-Eleven.
Okay. Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C 7-Eleven. I have a I have a motion by Member Gray, a second by Member Rendon. Member Gray and Member Rendon pulled this item. Do you have a question or comment?
I don't have any. I had my questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When this item came before, I had said that we needed to make sure that we have a good system in place, that we are providing families with support so they don't continue to be on this list, continue to be provided and considered homeless. Part of McKinney-Vento, I think, I've yet to see that. I've yet to see the strategies we're using. I've yet to see exactly what that is. And I said that if that was brought back to me and we did not see where that was going, what those strategies were, that I was going to vote no again. Because no family that is continuously homeless, because we've got families that are two and three years using this transportation system, they are no longer considered homeless. And if they are, what services or where have we made those connections to continue receiving this benefit? I want to make sure our students are safe. I want to make sure our students are, you know, comfortable. But having them homeless for two and three years is not healthy. So what have we done? And we don't, I don't have that data. So I will say no on this item. I approved it last time, not because I don't believe in what we're doing, but we're continuously doing it over and over again and not ensuring that we are either connecting families to where they need to be or connecting with the services they need to have to make sure they are no longer considered McKinney-Vento. If they are in the same school for two and three years, where's that, where do we draw the line? If they're going out of county, why are they going out of county? What are we not providing them? There's not a county around us that has a better services than we do. So I don't know why they're going out of county. Some of our ESC individuals, what are those reasons? Are they behavior reasons? What have we done? We don't have any of the justifications only here, give me 4.5 million dollars. And I don't think that's a reasonable assumption because we have the services. What are we doing? Are they behavior needs? Do we in ESC need to address those needs there? Do they need equipment on their buses? Do we need more aids on our buses? I don't have the answers to properly approve this money because this money is not really telling me, are our students healthy or safe? And why are we doing this? And so because agreed, understand the fact that they are approved vendors. They do have staff that are background screened. That is a good thing. I do approve that. But again, it's the reasons they're receiving them that I'm not, I don't feel comfortable because we've not been educated on what has been done, why are they still in this situation? And so I'm going to continue to do no until I have the full information of why we're providing this service and how long and when is our drawbacks? When are we putting additional services in? What else have we done? Because that's what's necessary for the health and safety of the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Perez?
Yes, just to answer a couple of your questions, but if superintendent, with the mental health piece of it, I was speaking with with the housing folks, Housing Authority, and they just now opened up the waitlist. The waitlist had been closed for about five years for housing. And unfortunately, families who were going from house to house to house. So those families who are displaced are considered homeless. Am I correct? Tracy Brown?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, so those families are considered homeless, so they continue going from place to place to place. I was working with a family last, last, last week, the week before last, who has a son in, who's using the McKinney-Vento and has been for the last about three years, to your point. But when they would put their application, the the waitlist was not even open for them to even receive those services. And they're considered not homeless if they're living with someone, but they're still homeless because they don't have a residence of their own. Am I correct?
And Miss Perez did dovetail on that. So we compare, it's the annual conference right now, Transportation. To Ms. Rendon's point, we 100% need to look at what this looks like. So we, Orange County is very similar to us. We still transport a few more kids, but they they are close to us. They spend four and a half times what we do on private transportation. I mean, it it can blossom. So there's a couple of things, just real quick, and I don't want to just do your thunder. But we 100% need to talk about what we put in place and what we're doing. But also, these companies do it because they make money. And the reality is that it's not, doesn't take a CDL to drive these. We can put our own people behind those. Now that we're getting close to having enough bus drivers, thanks to Laura Hill and to and to Charm, to Dr. Patton, if we need to do that, we put our own people behind there. It'll save us millions of dollars, literally, because there's two different companies that do it. And to Ms. Rendon's point, she did ask for that. There's two different companies. It was only about six weeks ago. So it wasn't that we've, you know, that this is the same one coming back a year later. But to your point, we, I do believe we need to have someone who knows, the practitioner in there and Tracy's team to to work on it. Because it is ESC, it is McKinney-Vento, it is. There are a few behaviors, but those are, it's much more the ESC students in the in the McKinney-Vento. So I feel better that they were with one of our employees as opposed to one of theirs. So I couldn't agree more with with what y'all are saying.
Right, and even if you get a practitioner who's retired, you know, who might come over, you know, to to work with you as far as a driver is concerned, but yes, most definitely.
If you see the rates, you guys might start driving as well. They're they're not cheap. They get paid pretty heavily.
Yeah, yeah.
Y'all may be driving the Uber.
But thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. Seeing that there's no further questions or discussions, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes with everyone voting yes, except for Member Rendon voting no. Okay, we're on the final one now, right? All right, we are there. We are on the final agenda item. 1001 EduPoint Final Software License for Synergy Students Information System. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
And board members, as you're aware, Synergy is the system of record for the 2425 school year. We've made this switch over to Focus. Hearing really good things around Focus and that SIS for next school year. But Synergy is that system of record for 2425. And Survey 9 needs to be reported out of Synergy in December of 2025. Licensing for the Synergy product is required to utilize the software. And this licensing cost is 248,74. But please note that this is a general fund expenditure that IT has budgeted for in '25, '26. It was a budgeted item, and it's the last bit of Synergy. It's just a license for the final bit of 2425 school year before the move over to Focus for '25, '26. And that's a 1001.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C 1001. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Gray. Member Gray and Member Rendon pulled this item. Do you have questions or comments? Member Gray, you're in the queue.
Oh, I don't have any questions. I already got it covered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Throughout the course of this last year, multiple times, multiple board members have asked for a legal action on Synergy for everything we've gone through, everything our staff has gone through, get us out of this contract. I've not heard anything, anything at all from any legal action, anything of them denying it. We've we've sued them, we got nothing. We're just going to go suck it up and take it and spend more money? I I just can't approve it. I I just can't approve more money to this company. And as a district superintendent, there's nothing, you guys keep giving us the Focus update, but you never gave us anything about how we're going after Synergy to make them accountable for not providing what they need to provide to us. At a very minimum, when they can't even give it our attendance, that's a problem. We can't even track behaviors, that's a problem. That should have been an absolute minimum requirement by any system relating to a school. So again, I find this to be a lack of the district providing us education and knowledge of what you've done as a district from our request to go after Synergy for whatever it is, negligence, time that we put in. At this point, we could do pain and suffering from our staff. I mean, it's absolutely ludicrous what we've had to go through and the amount of money we've had to spend. So without any knowledge from you guys, without any feedback from the district, I cannot give them a dime. And and if that's going to be the way we do it, that's the way we do it. But we've asked from September on for you guys to go after them, get some results. We want to get out of this contract. And it's just nothing. We've got nothing. We get Focus response, but we've got nothing on Synergy. So I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Seeing no further comments or questions, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes with myself, Member Perez, and Member Rendon voting no on this item. All right, so we will now move on to superintendent's comments. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My superintendent's updates will be briefed this evening, but I just want to provide a few updates. First, around our summer food service program. I think board members, you're aware, but our summer food service program began last week. And from June 2nd to July 24th, we offer students breakfast and lunch for free at schools that provide summer school programs. All children 18 years and younger can arrive at any, at an open school Monday through Thursday. And the breakfast and lunch meal times will be posted on the front office window. The child does not have to be enrolled in summer school to take advantage of those free meals. And that's similar to what we've done in in summers past. And this morning, it seems like a few days ago, but that was this morning, I had the pleasure of sitting on, of joining superintendents from Pinellas and Pasco, both Kevin Hendricks and John Legg, to discuss strategies that are being implemented by our respective districts to bolster educational opportunity outcomes and prepare our students for the future. It was hosted by the Tempe partnership. So thank you to Demetra Simmons for hosting us. This was a great discussion on early learning and elementary school performance and how it strongly linked with adult prosperity and the health of our future workforce and talent pipeline. It was a pleasure this morning to sit down with our superintendents, both Kevin and John, and have that panel discussion. I did want to make mention just some dates, so I don't have any any data to provide today, but just some updates. We will, I talked to Ms. McCray just a little bit before we got in here. We're looking at when we're going to be receiving some of our student, our our final data. We're looking like June 30th is when all the data will come in. So that's when we'll get to you. That's, we just got an email from the state today that June 30th will be the time where we get. And that's where you guys will see basically how we did as a school district, both grade three, grade four, grade five, the final data, we're looking at June 30th to get that in. After that data comes in, in a few weeks, a couple of weeks after that, they're looking at the second week in July is when we expect to hear information on school grades. So that's kind of the timeline we just received right before we walked in this board meeting was June 30th, all of our school data. And then finally, the week of July 8th, we should getting our school grade data that'll come in. So we've kind of given each of you board members some kind of updates and preliminary kind of where we stand. But once we get, we're waiting for one initial piece of data to come in before we can provide that final. But the state data will come in June 30 and July 8th for for school grades. But what you see in front of you, and I may even let Tracy, not to put you on the spot, but Ms. Brown was very, very proud of this data. So this is something the board can be proud of with all that we've done around the science of reading and to see the impacts. So if you look at, and Ms. Brown, you do, you so proud, I'm going to let you take it. Go ahead.
Yes, we're really excited about this data. This is PM3 data for this current school year for our VPK Head Start and PEeps, which are pre-K ESC students. And we're pretty proud of what what's happening in our classrooms. You'll see that in 2022 school year, PM3 data also. For VPK, we were at 80%. At Head Start, we were at 55%. And at pre-K ESC or PEeps, it was 29% ready for kindergarten PM3. If you looked at 2324, you'll see an improvement for VPK by 1%. We went from 80 to 81. And then Head Start, we dropped a little bit from 55 to 53%. And then for pre-K ESC, we went from 29% kindergarten ready to 33%. But here's the really, really good news, and we're excited because we've been working really, really hard. VPK went from 81% to 88%. Head Start, couldn't be prouder. 53% to 71% of the kids in Head Start being ready for kindergarten PM3. And then for our pre-K ESC, 20-point improvement. 33% of our students in pre-K ESC to 53% of them being ready for kindergarten. And these are all our four-year-olds that we were, that we tested this year. We contribute this improvement to a really, really good tier one curriculum. We're using Frog Street and we're in the second year of implementation. Thank you to this board for approving the purchase of Frog Street for our pre-K classrooms, all of our early childhood classrooms. We are getting coaching for our teachers in pre-K. And we are also, of course, continuing to do those quick checks, quick data checks with progress monitoring to see how kids are doing to make adjustments to our instruction. But we are also using conscious discipline, which is really something that helps kids with, helps teachers actually, with how they support kids around some of their executive functioning skills along with their self-regulation and any of those social, emotional, or social learning experiences. So we're excited about this data. We've been waiting and waiting and working and working to get here. And I think we're, you can see by the the graph here, we're making improvements. We're going to move our kids there. And these are all the kids that HCPS has been supporting and working with.
Also, I mean, Ms. Bergman is sitting back over there. I mean, this is, this is the alignment of curriculum, well, and the science of reading. So Frog Street for our pre-K, and then as they move into, of course, as you're aware, board, around UFL. So it's that same science of reading, phonetic awareness, phonics. So you can see the tremendous difference there. And just to put this in perspective, that's a total of about 3,000 kids. That's still those, all those graphs total about 3,000. So VPK, that 88%, we serve about 15, 50, what's 15, 56? 15, 56, you take 7% of that, that's another 112 four-year-olds in VPK that are now kindergarten ready. So thank you to this entire team, you know, Tracy Bergman.
Emily Chaminot.
Emily Chaminot. Make sure I didn't miss anybody.
Yeah, well, we got quite a few. Emily Chaminot, Sandy Show, Stephanie LaBelle, and Andrea Frazier, all of our supervisors, along with the director, Emily Chaminot, who have been working really, really hard. Also Lisa Haynes, who is also with our department. So we appreciate the partnership with academic services. Tracy Bergman has been a jewel to work with and and our teams work together. We want to make sure our kids are ready for kindergarten.
Thank you to this board. I mean, as Ms. Brown mentioned, it all starts with the with the board agenda item that's approved. It's Ms. Bergman, Ms. Brown aligning everything. So as these students leave VPK and in pre-K, the alignment then getting into kindergarten. We're up for some tremendous results with these, with this class that have had this full implementation. So very, very proud of that in the team. And thank you, Ms. Brown. National Merit Scholarship winners, just want to put those up there. On June 5th, we proudly announced that 30 of our students were named National Merit Scholarship winners. So I know, board members, you all know what that is, to be National Merit Scholar, 30 of them. That is a big, big deal. So you can see some of our seniors that are that are listed there. So congratulations to those 30. That is quite the accomplishment to be National Merit. So we have 30 of our of our of our seniors that that hit that mark. So congratulations to them. And finally, around influence in the future, we did have last week, our team held the Influence in the Future Learning Summit at King High School with 275 teachers in attendance. Our academic services team led this two-day training on AI policy in the classroom with all, also along with how to use AI for classroom management and teaching strategies. Our district is leading the way in AI. And I just want to, it's very, you know, I didn't get a chance to get over there, but to have 275 teachers in the first few days of summer that were out at this AI learning summit over at King was was pretty awesome to to hear about it. And finally, board members, it's been a long day for me, from the the panel this morning to then celebrating the life and memory of of my dear friend Gwen Henderson, who meant so much to this school district, our our community. And then, you know, in her role as as councilwoman, she was a tremendous friend to all of us. And I'm going to miss her, miss her greatly. So it's been an emotional day for me, but I miss you, Gwen, already. That's my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent Ayers. And thank you for remembering, or City Councilwoman Henderson again. I know that's been tough for you. We will now move on to board comments. Board members, just a reminder, you'll have five minutes each with 30 seconds for final thoughts. Member Washington, you're first in the queue.
Today's really been a rough day. You know, every now and then, there's an angel that comes down on earth. And we never know until the angel leaves. Today, our angel left. A truly great person in the educational field, as well in the political field. Always helping, always helping students. political field, always helping, always helping students. The students was her heart. Then she became a city councilwoman, hard worker, very successful in her years. And she did what she wanted to do by helping the community and helping District 5. I want to thank you, you did a great job. You did a great job today. And it's hard, it's hard to speak at a funeral, especially, especially for a person like Gwen Henderson. I want to thank you, Nadia, Lynn, Taddy for coming. I saw Shay, and I'm quite sure a lot of you couldn't make it. I talked to Charlie Maranda today because I wanted to try to understand. Charlie has been a city councilman for 26 years. So my question to Charlie was, Charlie, have you, have you known of any one city council person to die or while they passed or while they were in the office? He said, not during his 26 years. He never recalled that. Never in 26 years have we had a person to pass. I want to thank you all, I'm motion. I would like to make a motion that the superintendent bring back to our next meeting an agenda to consider naming a media center at Jefferson High School after city councilwoman Gwen Henderson, who recently has passed away. That's my motion.
And I second that motion, Mr.
Thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay. Seeing that there's a motion on the board, is there, I mean, a motion on the floor, the second, is there any discussion around the? I just have one question. Is there anything that violates policy in naming?
No. So this would be, the motion is to have the superintendent bring back an appropriate agenda item that would take into account your policy. But at the end of the day, this board is responsible for naming facilities, including media centers, and so he'll do that within the confines of your policy and the law. Can't be done at this meeting, but he can bring it back at the next meeting.
But we still vote on the?
You need to vote on the motion that Ms., yes.
Are there, seeing that there are no further questions, are there any other questions or concerns? All right. Please vote on the motion to bring back the agenda item to name the library at Jefferson after city councilwoman Gwen Henderson when your lights appear.
Thank you. I have one more before.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you all. I really appreciate that. Something a little more lighter now. I, Dorita Edgecombe would be recognized by the Rays at the June 19th game for contributions educated in Hillsborough County. The Rays will also recognize Juneteenth when they play the Baltimore Orioles during that time. And guess who will be throwing out the first pitch? Her daughter. Her daughter, yeah. No, not me. I'd be throwing that ball all over the place. Her daughter Allison would be doing so. I want to say congratulations to you, Dorita, because you well deserved that also. Thank you so much, and I appreciate it, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Washington, for your beautiful words. Member Gray?
No, it's me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Perez?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one thing to say. In celebration of Pride Month, I stand in solidarity with our students, teachers, and staff. In a world where some face discrimination based on their ethnicity, culture, or who they love, it's crucial that everyone in our community feels acknowledged, valued, and respected, and embraced. Know that this board member is committed to creating an inclusive environment where diversity is celebrated and everyone is supported for who they are. So I just want to say, Happy Pride Month.
Thank you, Member Perez. All right, Member Gray?
Thank you, Member Perez. That needed to be said. And the recognition or and/or proclamation, I believe, should have been put forth, but that's for another day, another discussion. Our Human Trafficking Committee, along with our Student Online Safety Committee, met with all the regional superintendents and the cabinet. We definitely have a fear of trafficking through the cell phones, social media, student to student. Pablo, you can go ahead and share the video, but a special thanks to Drucey Diaz Phelps for putting everything together on our Human Trafficking Committee. She's the chair. Jan Edwards, Connie Rose, Kate Papa, Amanda Sanchez.
So we began the Human Trafficking Committee, and after that, the Student Online Safety, SOS, because much of the human trafficking nefarious characters are coming really right from the cell phones. So we have a panel of experts ranging from the FBI to Hillsborough County Sheriff Office, No More Foundation, agencies throughout the state. And what we want to do is make sure that we bring to parents and to young adults the awareness that your phone and what you're doing with social media can in fact bite you back and can in fact bring you into what is called the human trafficking world, that information, photos can be sold as far as that, plus you're the human being, the person, the child can be sold.
Human trafficking can touch anybody. It doesn't matter your age, your race, your gender, where you're from, socioeconomic status, educational level. It can happen to anyone because it comes down to traffickers looking for vulnerabilities in somebody and then learning how to exploit those vulnerabilities for their gain.
We're going to commit ourselves again to going throughout the district to make and help our parents become not only aware, but what strategies can they do to protect their child? And if, God forbid, it happens, what numbers, what phone numbers, what resources shall they use to mitigate what could be very, very sad?
You are not alone, and you have the support of the whole community around you.
So in closing of the appreciation, Amanda Sanchez from the Florida Department of Children and Families, Betsy Conley, FBI Tampa Division, Ashley Capucci, one of our own, the Hillsborough County Supervisor for PE, Jessica Gore from Gagel. A special thanks to our regional superintendents, our Chief of Staff, Dr. Richard Graves, our cabinet members, our Student Services Team, Angelique Zenick and Michael Kellner, our Face Team, thank you, Owen Young, and your team for also being there and supporting. And we do have a plan to cover the next year. In the little bit of time that remains, I want to thank again and again, and Member Washington, our Allison Edgecombe, wonderful supporter, has made a commitment not only to have African-American, the Thurgood Marshall Clubs in 48 schools. Now mindful, she only started about two years ago. So here's the poster contest, and as we can see, it ranges from different grade levels and keep, I think it's an ongoing, yeah, keep going. So really identifying again those words and the need for freedom and equal rights. But this is from the heart and soul of our students who took place or who took part in this poster contest. Yeah, interesting. You learn a lot from art, that's for sure. Yeah, that's a good one, yeah. And Simmons, thank you, Mr. C. And if I have 41 seconds, just thanking again Melissa Magado and our new ELL Director, Jessica De La Prida, for their multilingual program. They're doing wonderful work, and they committed themselves to a huge summer institute. We're very proud of them, and I am done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Gray, Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn, and thank you, Member Perez, for making sure that we talked about that and we discussed that, the importance of Pride Month and talking about that. Thank you. I also want to thank you, Mr. Washington, for bringing that forward for Gwen Henderson. I know a very, very good friend of mine is librarian at Jefferson High School, and I remember five years ago, superintendent, you and I, you know, and you weren't superintendent back there, we were at Jefferson High School, and we started talking to Gwen about when she wanted to run for office and what she wanted to do and the difference that she wanted to make. I remember it like yesterday when she decided to run that. And I remember, you know, what a great caretaker she was for her mother as well, and then also what a legacy she left with her daughter. So I was really very, very touched by the service at Allen Temple. It was so moving, it was so beautiful. I mean, I laughed, I cried, it was just very, very emotional, and I'm really, I think that it's really nice that we can do something like that and hopefully plan it for a time where so many people can be there and remember, and that way her legacy lives forever. I did, I did want to say one other thing, and I actually didn't even plan on saying this today, but, you know, last week when you went to the State Department of Education, you know, I think back of myself in my twenties when I taught in Japan. And there in Japan, in the Asian culture, you know, teachers and administrators and superintendents are the most respected in our society. If you go to anywhere in Asia, and I spent four years in Asia, that is the place where you are most respected. In the very beginning of class, the teachers, students used to stand up to me, and they used to bow, and they used to say, please teach me. And at the end of every class, they used to bow down and they'd say, thank you very much. And I want to say that I was very disappointed by the type of way you were treated at the State Board of Education. I think it's really sad when we are looking at these, our students are looking for adults to model behavior. And the type of behavior and the way that people talk to you and treated you as a human being, I thought was really sad. You can make your point across, and nobody, nobody in this room, nobody wants pornography in schools. Everybody wants children to be safe. I'd love to think that five, you know, high school boys are running into a school and saying, come on, let's read page 258, you know, let's look at this, you know? And we want to have a process, but there's no reason for someone to treat you that way. I was really disappointed. I mean, when I talked to you and I was upset with you, I treated you professionally and with respect. And for people to put down librarians or to put down teachers when we are spending millions of dollars outsourcing in places like Zimbabwe and Costa Rica and trying to find teachers to bring here, I mean, I think it's really sad because I think it's, you know, education is the most important thing. It's something that nobody can take away from you. And I really hope that the Florida Department of Education stops looking at Hillsborough and look at all the wonderful things that we're doing across the nation, from being music education, being recognized for all the accelerated programs that we do, our graduation rates, how hard everyone works. We should be recognized for all the wonderful things that we're doing, and everyone should be respected because our students are watching us. So the way people treated you, they need to think about, do they really want people to have that perception of that? I expect better from the Florida Department of Education. And if that expects me to be removed because I expect respect for our superintendent, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Before we adjourn tonight, I want to take a few moments to share some personal reflections. These are my own thoughts, and I believe it's important to speak directly and honestly, especially in these challenging times. As we close another school year, I want to acknowledge that June is Pride Month, a time to celebrate and uplift the voices, contributions, and the humanity of our LGBTQ+ students, employees, and families. Hillsborough County Public Schools is home to a beautifully diverse community, and every person in this community, I want you to know you belong here. Everyone should have pride in who they are, but for those who have been marginalized, silenced, or denied basic rights, pride is more than just a celebration, it's a statement of resilience and justice. And I believe that pride is for everyone, not just those who identify as LGBTQ+. Because pride is about standing together, honoring human dignity, and recognizing that our differences make us stronger. So to everyone in Hillsborough County, happy pride. I think many of us were disappointed the recognition wasn't honored tonight, but I do expect that there will be one in October. Now, I want to address something that has deeply troubled me this past week. As an elected board member, I will always follow the law. Process and laws matter. But like many of you, I watched the recent State Board Meeting of Education where our superintendent was called to appear. And as someone who serves alongside dedicated board members and educated, I was shocked and frankly appalled. That meeting should have been about oversight, legal clarity, transparency, and support for public education. Instead, elected school board members were misrepresented and insulted, and even more outrageously, our media specialists, our school librarians were targeted. These are professionals who help make students, who help students discover a love of reading, explore new ideas, and think critically in a complex world. And to imply that librarians are criminals, to question their literacy or to label them child abusers, it's not just false, it's dangerous. They are not criminals, they are educators. And this kind of rhetoric doesn't exist in a vacuum. At a time when political violence is rising and a state representative was just assassinated in Minnesota, reckless language is dangerous. This is not a game, these are real people, these are our staff, our neighbors, our community, and they deserve support and protection, not persecution. And I will not stay silent as they are villainized. As I said earlier, we are following the law, we are following state orders. The board and district leadership are working to comply with state directive, even when they come with little guidance. But let's be honest, asking for transparency is not breaking the law. Asking how decisions were made, what criteria were used, and how our community can be involved is not defiance, it's accountability. It is not illegal to request a clear process. It is not inappropriate to expect public clarity from public institutions. In fact, it's our responsibility to ensure that public trust is maintained, especially when the decisions affect our classrooms, our teachers, and our children. As John Adams said, we are a nation of laws, not men. Let me be clear, we are elected by the people of Hillsborough County. We serve our constituents, and that is the foundation of democracy. We answer to the public, and what the public deserves is clarity. They want to know how these 55 books were selected from removal. What is the process? Where was the opportunity for community input? This isn't just about books, it's about who gets to decide what our children are allowed to read, explore, and imagine, and that's why transparency matters. I want the public to know, I still expect a clear and comprehensive list of every book removed from our schools. I expect a transparent, detailed report from our superintendent explaining the internal review process, and I expect that report to be made public. Lastly, if the state wants to keep a close watch on Hillsborough, I welcome it. Because what they'll see is a community deeply committed to public education. They'll see students thriving, teachers innovating, and board members, despite relentless pressure, fighting every day for our schools. Not a political agenda, but support, clarity, and truth. I'm sorry to go a little bit over, but in closing, let me say this, every board member here is committed to following the law, and we are. We will continue to serve this community with professionalism, transparency, and care because our children are watching, and they deserve better. Moving forward, we truly hope to build a relationship with the Board of Education that's grounded in mutual respect, support, and a shared purpose for the good of our schools, our educators, and most importantly, our children. Thank you.
Hey, right on time.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned.